Good morning, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting this morning. First item on the agenda is 1.01. The amendments to Committee of the Whole of September the 14th. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2.01, Appearance of Visitors. We had five visitors signed up this morning. Do we need to read? I guess we do. Are you ready, Karen? I want to welcome to those who have signed up to speak this morning before the Board of Trustees, and thank you for your interest in Greenville County Schools. Before we begin, I will ask the Board Secretary to remind each speaker of the procedures we expect all guests to abide by today. Dr. Styles.
Thank you. As each speaker's name is called, he or she should proceed to the podium at the end of the board diet, where there is a microphone and light system. Each speaker has up to three minutes to speak to the board. The light system will be green for the first two minutes and will turn yellow when one minute remains on the speaker's allotted time. In keeping with Board policy KCA, abusive language or personal attacks aimed at students or staff members will not be permitted. All speakers are expected to behave in an orderly and respectful manner. The board will not engage in discussion with the speaker or respond to comments. The superintendent will designate a member of the staff to respond to each speaker in an appropriate and timely manner.
Thank you, Dr. Styles. Our first visitor is Ryan Barnett.
So Greenville County Schools received over $162 million to keep COVID rules in effect from the federal government. It was titled the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Public Law 117-2. I just have a question. What were those funds specifically used for in the Greenville County Schools? I also understand, you know, money talks, especially in the school board districts. However, so do kids in seats. Parents can always remove kids from school to protest continued COVID tyranny. We, the people, want a complete drop of all remaining COVID restrictions in the Greenville County public school system. I also have some articles here. One was entitled "COVID PCR Tests Are Scientifically Meaningless." Though the whole world relies on RT-PCR to diagnose SARS-CoV-2 infection, the science is clear: They are not fit for purpose. Lockdowns and hygienic measures around the world are based on numbers of cases and mortality rates created by the so-called SARS-CoV-2 RT-PCR tests used to identify positive patients, whereby "positive" is usually equated with "infected." But looking closely at the facts, the conclusion is that these PCR tests are meaningless as a diagnostic tool to determine an alleged infection by a supposedly new virus called Moreover, it is worth mentioning that the PCR tests used to identify so-called COVID-19 patients, presumably infected by what is called SARS-CoV-2, do not have a valid gold standard to compare them with. This is a fundamental point. Tests need to be evaluated to determine their preciseness, strictly speaking, their sensitivity and specificity, by comparison with the gold standard, meaning the most accurate method available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Next speaker is Raelyka Liteplu. I hope I said that correct.
It's okay.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Raelyka Liteplu, and I'm a concerned citizen and parent, also a taxpayer of Greenville County. I am concerned about the direction our school district is heading, specifically with the teaching of social-emotional learning. Though at first glance, SEL seems harmless, I further realize that it is also called "life skills," another tricky term if you ask me. But this is still under the broad umbrella of critical race theory. CRT does the exact opposite of what it claims. It focuses everyone on skin color, suggests that all white kids are privileged, and all black kids are oppressed. It manipulates, confuses, and terrifies our children. This means putting negative thoughts in our children's minds that were never there to begin with. It is the most suggestive form of indoctrination based on Marxism that will destroy our children and the future of this country. The homeschooling rate has quadrupled since 2019, and black parents are pulling their children out of schools at five times the rate. Four and a half to five million children are being homeschooled now as compared to two and a half million in 2019. Why do you think that is? Not due to concern over the virus, but rather how the public school system is indoctrinating children through CRT, bizarre sex education, the transgender agenda, mandating masks for eight hours a day, and in some cases even requiring vaccination. Because our children are not being educated in a way that will benefit their future, that's why these people are taking their children out of school. CRT is trying to build racist and create segregation. CRT, or SEL, life skills, or whatever name you want to call it, we want all CRT programming of children and teachers removed from the school district immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeff Magg.
Hey, good to see you guys. And I just wanted to take a minute and thank you guys for doing what you did a couple weeks ago. That is huge. I know all of you may not have been for that, but you did eliminate the requirement for masks, and I think that's a step for freedom. And you guys need to be thanked for that. I appreciate that. And not only me, I'm representing hundreds and hundreds of people who I know for a fact were relieved after that happened. And to the surprise of many, and congressmen as well, were really surprised at what you did, and I really appreciate that. Because these kids, if you go into schools, which you guys have, none of them are wearing masks. They can wear them, but none of them do that. I mean, hardly any have masks on, and they are frustrated with all the things that have gone on. And we can work together on furthering a lot of this stuff that we're doing. And, you know, Judge Lewis came out with a mandate to stop the proviso. She didn't have a right to do that. She is a government politician from the U.S. and does not have authority over the state to do that. And that is a state issue, not her. She does not have authority, and I appreciate you guys knowing that and taking that into account and consideration. I really do. The last night's legislative meeting, if you guys saw that, was powerful. There were teachers there that were pleading not to have all these COVID requirements. They were, teachers were saying how much damage is being done with all the quarantines, with masks, and all this stuff, and kids are on edge. And these were teachers last night talking about that. It was powerful. And so, you know, and then you have, which is frustrating, and I understand, there's nobody here, I don't think, that would recommend any type of violence or any type of, towards anybody here. I mean, that's just, they should be thrown in jail if they do that. But on the same hand, the parents' rights are critical, and when we don't realize the parents' rights and we don't take those into account fully, it's a mistake. Our country was not founded like that. We were founded on freedoms, and the people running that, you guys know that. I mean, you guys are, you guys know what you're doing, and I believe that you want the right thing for everybody, for every kid, and I am appreciative of that. And on the same hand, when you have somebody coming out that says that we're domestic terrorists because somebody raises their voice and yells, does whatever, that's a First Amendment right. Doesn't make it exactly right, but people are frustrated, and so I appreciate it greatly. Again, thank you for what you guys did last, and further that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mark Roberts.
Hey, good morning. First, I wanted to start by also thanking you so much for not implementing the mask mandate and rejecting DEHEC's unofficial mandate over our schools and our children. I think the message is clear that we will no longer unconditionally comply with DEHEC. We will decide which measures we implement to keep our children, our family, and our staff safe. And I think these decisions should be based on evidence and not just a feeling of safety. Of course, when I say "we," I mean you, because you're the ones who are elected by the people to serve the people, and I think it's really our duty to get this right. Contact tracing and quarantine is ineffective at preventing the spread of COVID in schools, and it's damaging to children. It's more effective to monitor the symptoms and test regularly, but we're wasting efforts on contact tracing because it's easier. All you're doing is you're substituting a more challenging task with an easier task to feel safe, but this is intellectually lazy and the results are ineffective. So much about this strategy is not based on science. You exclude vaccinated students from quarantine, but they can get infected and spread this virus. A study in Nature, one of the premier scientific journals, shows that the vaccinated and unvaccinated are infected with a Delta variant at similar rates with similar viral loads. But the vaccinated close contacts can stay in school, not based on science. Other studies show that antibodies and naturally infected COVID can decline after only four months, but they can stay in the body for over a year. The natural infection also leads to stronger memory B cells, and these have been shown to be stronger against future variants. So you have more than a year's worth of protection, better against variants, but you only allow three months in your strategy. This isn't based on science. We know vaccine efficiency decreases with time, likely faster than natural immunity. The Pfizer vaccine decreases to 78% after 90 days, the AstraZeneca to 60% after 90 days. It's less effective than natural immunity, but these kids can stay in school. That's not based on science. In any case, there's no evidence that contact tracing in schools decreases the spread of COVID. It damages kids and leads to learning loss. We know that. Two weeks ago, I asked you for data about how many close contacts in your school are being infected, and I haven't heard back yet, but others are sharing their data. The CDC is now rejecting the idea that close contact tracing in schools is effective. In Australia, 3,400 students, about 400 teachers that are close contacts, only 28 students and five staff were infected. That's less than 0.9%. Seventeen schools in Wisconsin, 191 cases, only seven from close contacts. In North Carolina, the largest study of 90,000 students, only 32 cases from close contacts. They expected 900 based on the case rate. In Salt Lake City, 1,000 close contacts from 51 students, 700 tested, only 12 positive. Genetic sequencing found that only five of the 12 were school-related, 0.7%. In New York City, the attack rate was even lower, just 0.5%. How many studies do you need to see? I urge you to really stop this contact tracing in schools immediately. You can monitor symptoms and encourage testing for potential.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
That's your solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Abigail Hendricks.
Good morning. My name is Abigail Hendricks. I don't have a speech. I tried to put together some notes this morning. It's been a little crazy at my house because we've been picking up the pieces from what contact tracing has done to my family. So I just want to give you kind of a recap, personally, what we've experienced. My son started freshman at Greenville High School, and he was making hundreds in almost all of his classes. I think the lowest grade he had was an 80. He really, he loves football. He has dreams of going to college on scholarship. He's very driven. He knows how important high school is for that. He scored the winning touchdown for his team. It was a highlight for him. And then he was pulled out for contact tracing. He was told by the principal that if he made poor choices while he was out, that his grades would probably suffer. And he did not make poor choices, but his grades suffered. And he went back to school, trying to play catch-up, and he started making 40s and 60s. Thankfully, he's catching back up, but they pulled him from the football team and said that he could not practice. His coach sent him home. The next day, he quit football because he's so devastated. My son is very passionate. My son has a future. But they are fragile. These children are fragile, and contact tracing is killing the dreams of these children. It is setting them behind educationally. I beg you to stop contact tracing. I've already looked, I've looked everywhere for the statutes, the laws. I know what they say. It gives DEHEC the ability to do these things. DEHEC has the job to do, not the schools. Yet we're putting our staff in the way of these things. The principal asked my son about private medical information. He's not allowed to do that. I've had to file claims with DEHEC, the PPRA claim, and I don't want to do that against the school, but I don't have a choice. You're putting your staff directly in front of what I could be suing DEHEC for, but you guys are putting your staff in this compromising position as well. I just don't understand why you would elect to keep doing something that DEHEC is supposed to be doing. If you want to let DEHEC come in, open the doors to DEHEC, let them use their staff, their money, their funding, let them do contact tracing, but we need to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Next item is administration part of our agenda today, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the agenda is item 3.01, the Hiring Report. Dr. Oyster.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. This is a report we annually provide to the board, usually in September, but this year in October. Obviously, a lot of things going on and a lot of transactions taking place in HR. As you may recall, we added personnel this year to assist with support remediation efforts in reading and math, particularly at the elementary level and some at the middle school level. So it's been a pretty busy hiring season, but we now have this report prepared for you, and Ms. Gibbs will share that with you and respond to any questions that you might have about it. Ms. Gibbs?
All right. Thank you. We will, are tying this to the goal two of the strategic plan, where we recruit, retain, and develop exemplary personnel in all positions. So this is a recap of last fiscal year. We processed 1,691 hires, and you can see by category of who we hired during that fiscal year. We had instructional employees. We worked hard to add to our substitute pool because we had had a number of substitutes no longer willing to work, and so that just gives you a recap. In the adjunct extended day, many of those are adjunct coaches or extended day program employees that work in our after-school programs. We had 43 orientations in our hourly work group over at Space Drive. We did those in person, socially distanced, but had those in person. We did converted to virtual orientations for substitutes. We had a very good platform we've developed to do those successfully. We had 95 virtual orientations for other groups that were processed by HR in this location. We had a number of transfers. As you remember, we built a virtual program, and then those people, many, went back into schools. We processed 2,003 separations from the district. On our online application system, we took 34,240 applications. 27,000 of those were external people applying to the district, and then 7,000 were people internally applying for opportunities within the district. We average about 250 long-term medical leaves, military leaves, per month. That 250 people changes per month. Some people may be out for three months, some may be out for six weeks with surgery, but we typically always have about 250 people out. And we also had the last year's challenge of, we had 4,645 COVID leave forms and requests that were processed through HR. We conducted 80 investigations where employee concerns or make sure that people were doing their work properly, that we had information that we needed to investigate. Our two employee relations representatives tracked the number of contacts they receive, and they received 600 last fiscal year, and that was up from 289 the year before. What we saw last year and continue to see this year is an increase in mental health concerns, in stress concerns, and employees reaching out to us for assistance. We did not include in that 600 unemployment requests, accommodation requests, questions about the bonus payments or vaccine or COVID questions. If we had counted those, that would have been another 600, so about 1,200 requests that came into employee relations. You'll remember that during the shutdown, we paid all our employees. We paid bus drivers, we paid food service workers, then we had a repayment through work hours. But we still processed 1,059 unemployment claims. So if you were an adjunct employee working in an after-school program, because we did not pay that group of people, you could file for unemployment. In addition, a number of our employees have second jobs, so if that second job was not working, then that unemployment claim would come to us. So we would have to go through that process to file the claim to say we were still paying those employees. And then if a person was awarded unemployment and we were still paying them, then we had to go through what they call an appeal hearing to say, hey, we were paying our employee. We do not believe they should have received unemployment. So we just have received back a check for $601,000 of claims that were paid that through the appeal process, we were able to get those funds reinstated to the district. We are in HR, re-certify teachers, or any employees who have certificates with the South Carolina Department of Ed. That work is done primarily in the HR department. So that process, those teachers have to submit the coursework or the PD things that they did, that we submit to the state to show that their certificate should be renewed. 366 teachers had a degree change. That means they went from bachelor's to master's, or bachelor's 18 to master's. We renewed 5,175 contracts for teachers and administrators. We placed 213 student teachers, and we had 392 practicum students. So those are students who are in education programs prior to student teaching, and we have to coordinate that with schools and the schools where they go and work. Just a little bit small slide, but in terms of administrative hiring, we hired 12 principals and directors last year. We hired or transferred, moved from location to location 35 assistant principals and 26 administrative assistants. This might be the busiest year that I remember in the last 10 of the number of transitions we had in administrative positions. I also showed from our EEO report, we have what percentage minorities we have in certain categories of employees. So for example, our principal-directors, that's 21.05%, our assistant principals, 27.63%, and our administrative assistants are 20%. If you'll recall, an administrative assistant in our world is really an assistant principal paid on the teacher's salary schedule. This slide talks about how we are working to recruit teachers. So we have worked with our high schools to increase the number of teacher cadet programs. We worked with relationships with our universities, the student-teacher support that we give. We have had a number of our own virtual recruiting events, and then participated in in-district and in-state recruiting events and out-of-state recruiting events. For those of you who've been on the board a while, you know it was very normal for us to go to Michigan, to New York, to Alabama, to Florida, to Texas to interview. Most of those events over the last two years have been virtual, so we continue to reach out. We connected with a platform to do our Shining Stars Recruiting Event virtually. We did it on two Saturdays, one for secondary and one for elementary, and we had candidates I just listed from multiple countries and states who signed up and participated in these recruiting events. We are in the process of doing an RFP for a vendor to continue to do recruiting events virtually for this year, in hopes to have that in place to do a recruiting event for December graduates, to help us with some of the openings we have and hire some of those people to start in January. For the 2021 school year, the other information was kind of fiscal year. We hired 698 teachers. Of those, 16.3% were ethnically diverse. So I've given you a breakdown. And on the next slide, one of the things that has helped us increase the diversity of teachers are the alternative programs. If you look at GATE, and I gave you a two-year picture, last year, we hired 23 teachers in the GATE program. 17.4% were diverse. This year, we had the highest number of people we hired through GATE, 53, and that was 16.9. We have worked to, if a person qualifies under GATE, that prior would have probably been hired under PACE through the state program. We have tried to move them into GATE because of the support systems we have in place through GATE, and we have been successful in doing that. CATE are our career category of teachers that come into the career centers traditionally from a business background, and these other American Board and Teachers of Tomorrow are some national programs for alternative ways to enter teaching. And then for this school year, we do have three teachers we hired through programs for hiring international teachers. And this shows from the EEO report that we run what is the ethnic diversity of our teachers. So you will see that since 2014, this report is due to the government every two years, but we started in 2019, running it annually, even though we don't have to submit it, so we have that number. So we have been able to increase our percent of minority teachers at a time when those education programs across the nation have seen decreases in people going into education, and in particular decreases in the diversity of candidates coming out of education programs. Some of you, or all of you, may know about the program we created where teacher cadets can get credit for some of the very, two of the courses in high school to start a degree in education, then go to Greenville Tech, and then transfer to Clemson. We're not to the point of anyone being at Clemson yet, but we are working on that, and we have increased the participation in teacher cadets. If you watch the web pages or the Facebook posts, Instagram posts from some of the high schools, this past week, I have seen where teacher cadets have been in a number of elementary schools, a number of middle schools, and in a child development center where those students are getting involved in visiting different classrooms. Mentioned a number of these things. This week, we have a virtual event called Ignite the Future. We give every student-teacher that's student teaching in the fall an ability to participate in this virtual event, and often, we're able to make commitments for those people to join us for next school year. Looking at any, a lot of advertising, there is a program called SC Create that allows teachers who have regular ed certification to easily add on special ed certification, which is a critical area for us with a shortage of candidates, and we've been working to get individuals into that program. I don't have it on this slide, but we also have professional leave for classroom aides who want to become teachers, and they can keep their benefits while they're doing their student teaching, and we have been working to increase participation in that program. And this is a very tiny slide, but just some more additional things that we're doing, trying to reach out through social media to expand GATE knowledge. trying to reach out through social media to expand gate knowledge of gate, working with Clemson on teacher resident master teaching model. And then looking at, we added business education as an approved area of certification for gate for 2122. And next year, we're adding special ed, which will be a plus. Many of you may remember Furman has had a five-year program where the fifth year teachers can come to us. It's called an internship certificate. It's kind of like their student teaching while they're working on their masters, but they don't have an official certificate, and that's been a successful program for us. Now Anderson University has a similar program, and we have two individuals we hired into special ed jobs this year through that program. One of the challenges for us this past year and this year has been staffing in our traditional operations work groups. There are lots of jobs in Greenville County. If you go anywhere to eat, if you ride down Wade Hampton Boulevard, Pleasantburg, people are hiring. I, I have been here 14 years. These are the highest turnover numbers I remember us having in these work groups. And I think there are a number of factors contributing to that, and we certainly have not started the year with this number of openings. And we have not made much progress, a little bit of progress in not continuing to have openings in these work groups. Very competitive environment. Things we are challenged with, fans and transportation are nine-month jobs. So for some people, they love, traditionally in fans, we would have a lot of mothers who worked and they liked their summers off. But those are challenges. Not everyone can sustain life on a nine-month job, even though we offer opportunities in the summer for people to work. I think the availability of unemployment has impacted the workforce. We had people who were working retirees, who were older, who had COVID concerns about working, and so we've lost some people due to that. There is a national shortage of truck drivers, and that impacts a national shortage of bus drivers. I have even seen a post where school districts were paying parents $250 if they would drive their kids to school based on the shortage they had of bus drivers in that district. On a positive note, we have had double-digit training classes for bus drivers, our last two classes. So we have seen a little bit of an uptick. You helped us by making some changes in pay July 1st, which will help us. But one of the challenges in, when you get to $12.93 is entry-level pay, but you're a custodian and you have to pay 8% into the state retirement system as a mandate from the first day you go to work, that means that your take home after that, after that deduction's $11.90. So if you go by and you see fast food people hiring for $14 an hour, $15 an hour, it is still a, a very competitive market. We have good benefits, but sometimes at that wage rate, it is hard for people to think about 28, 30 years down the road and, and their retirement benefit, what it's worth in the long haul. We do have a full-time recruiter for this hourly group, and she is everywhere around Greenville, trying to get our name out, participating in job fairs, posting information about our jobs. We do monthly or more often job fairs across the district. We have put in a referral incentive for transportation. If you are a transportation, you refer someone to become a bus driver. We've had some success with that. We are transitioning in January of 2022 to a weekly payroll from a semi-monthly payroll. So two times a month, people get paid today, to this work group's getting paid weekly, and that we believe that will help us with retention of employees. And I think one of the things I researched for doing this presentation is we have promotional opportunities within these work groups. So how are we advertising that last year, Building Services had eight custodians or head custodians who became plant engineers. Fans had 28 promotions into assistant manager or manager positions and, and has a really good training program. Transportation had seven promotions to supervisors or different jobs within transportation. So how can we get the word out that if you join us, even in an entry-level job, there are opportunities to advance within Greenville County? Next month, we pushed off a presentation on support for employees, but I did have a slide because we have seen the, the employee assistant program to continue to be a valuable resource for our employees. Next month, I'll share some statistics about participation. I'm not sure my staff, which a lot of them are sitting around the room, without that, we would feel like we did not have enough tools to help employees these days. Our utilization has been similar to prior years, but the company Aspire says other companies have had decreases in participation during the pandemic, so we are glad that our participation stayed the same. We have had to address a lot of crisis kind of issues and concerns. One of the things the EAP does, if, if a school feels like they have an employee who's suicidal, all we have to do is put that employee in the room with an employee to call the EAP. They will get a counselor on the phone, and they will assess whether we need to call for assistance, call a family member, which is a big help if you have an employee in that level of crisis. They help with financial issues, family issues, health, and legal issues. They also have had a special section related to COVID and concerns and resources for employees and managers. During Summer Academy this year, we offered four sessions put on by our EAP virtually, improving our emotional intelligence, building resiliency during challenging times, the power of positivity, and managing conflict in the workplace. And you can see that all of those were well-attended. And one of the resources EAP provides are those training tools that we can use for district level or for school-level trainings. Just, the whole world is impacted by COVID, and our team in HR, I mentioned the number of COVID leave requests, the increase in employee relations contacts. There are very few people who have not personally been impacted by people who have had COVID or have had serious illnesses in their family and perhaps deaths. So we have had to deal and give a lot of guidance and counseling to employees' concerns and fears. The high turnover, the substitute, a number of working, our, our bulk of retirees used to always be those retired, of substitute, used to be those retired employees. We had a great number of them who said, just not willing to substitute right now. We did for 2020, staff a virtual school of about 750 to 800 people, and then we dismantled that school back to a couple of hundred and placed those people back in schools. And we had a record number of unemployment claims, and if we had not stayed on top of that to get that money back that was paid incorrectly, then we, we would not have gotten that $600,000 back that we just recently got back. We, we had great positives with the bonus payment, but some challenges because we'd never done that before, so we got to learn something new. We had never done retroactive pay increases, and that was a challenge, but a positive. We did see and continue to see an increase in mid-year retirements. So in the past, if I was a teacher and I was eligible to retire, I typically retired at the end of the school year. And now we see people, they're eligible to retire in November, they may retire in November, they may retire in March. I think that's just the world we're in today, and that is a new issue for us. And we've seen an increase in breach of contracts. So people who just say, sorry, I can't do this anymore. I'm going to leave my teaching job and do something different, or I'm just going to stay home. And we counsel them about the impact on their teaching certificate, and they just still make the decision to leave mid-year with, and that, you know, without, I guess they understand the consequence to their teaching certificate, but they're still willing to leave. Our focus for this year is on teacher recruitment. I don't think this will get any easier. I think there's still a national shortage of people going into teaching. There's a shortage in South Carolina for meeting the needs that we have, especially in special ed, in math. Those are the critical areas. We will work with those people that help us with gate to, and the special ed component, our teacher retention, looking at the upbeat survey and exit surveys. The hourly recruiting in the upstate, I think, is an ongoing challenge. We hope the weekly payroll will give us some advantages we haven't had. And we're working with Karen Cap on, a group of employees are working on a development continuum, so people see what opportunities they have to advance and become, move into leadership roles. We have purchased a software product for Title IX, which will have some benefit to us in HR because it, we can track our employee contacts for employee relations in a more detailed way so that we can see trends or, or report off that information. And we have submitted an RFP and have started the process on a salary study for the building level positions, principals, assistant principals, and then district administrative and professional positions. So all that data has been sent to the company that was, won the award, and we're in the process of them getting started to get the comparable data to compare our salaries where we are to other districts. I think that's it. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. We have a few board members with questions. Start with Ms. Goodwin-Carwell.
Thank you, Lynn, for this report. I wanted to know on the EEO 5 report, it gives other data besides just the teacher data, right?
It does.
I would like to see that full report. I have a question on the GATE program.
Okay.
With the GATE program, why is our percentage lower than the PACE program in the state as far as the percentage of, of hiring minorities? And it's on...
No, you're saying our gate...
Our GATE program in comparison to the PACE program, which is state, right?
That...
In the PACE program, state?
Are you saying, why is ours lower than PACE for us, not for the whole state, right?
Gate is ours, right?
Yes.
Pace is the state.
I, we will have to go back and look at some of that data. It could be our GATE program was approved with some GPA requirements and some specific majors. The PACE is a little more open, so we can do some research and get that back to you along with the EEO report.
And when we had that report the last time on the GATE, I asked that question about the GPA, because our GPA requirements are higher than the PACE requirements, and I never, I don't think I ever got an answer on that.
I think...
The answer to that is, our program had to be approved by the state, and they approved it with those GPA requirements in place.
And my question was, why was ours so, so much higher than the state's requirements?
I believe that was the insistence of the state, that they set, that we set a higher bar for that than the state program since we're operating a program, I don't know if you want to call it in competition with the state's program, but that's what it is. And I believe that ethnic diversity, Lynn, refers to our participants in PACE, not the state's level of ethnicity and participation statewide. So it's not to confuse the two things.
Okay, and the, the slide before that, I'm, I'm kind of concerned that we only see the, go back another slide. It's the slide. Oh, it's got numbers on it. Oh, five. Number five. Page five. That the, now, the, the hiring, was that all internal, external, or, or it was a, it was a combination?
This administrative hiring?
Yes.
It, it's a combination. I could get you some statistics that would show how many principals were internal, external. I didn't bring my list in here with me. We've run about 75% for principals internal to the district, 25% external, but I have to go look at those 12 people and confirm.
What about district officials, the manager minority percentage? Because both of those are, it's, it's kind of concerning to me that they are in single digits. If you could get that for me, I'd appreciate it. I also wanted to know, how many of your recruitment efforts, I know it was virtual, how many of your recruitment efforts were focused on HBCUs?
Margaret, do you know how many HCBU, we may have to get that back to you, the, the colleges in South Carolina that still have education programs, we participate, correct?
Well, the ones that do have the teacher prep programs, I would like to get that information.
Okay.
Okay. With, and now, in, in one of your other slides, it says, down there where you have promotional opportunities, I think that was with you, with your different classified positions. Do you have, how many were the, were those all, were they promoted to management?
So I will go, I will look at those right there.
Down there at the bottom, with building services, fans, and transportation.
So I did yesterday, based on a question you submitted, of our current fans, managers, and assistant managers, 38% of fans, managers are diverse, 33.3 assistant managers, and 34.7% of plant engineers.
Okay, you have the promotional opportunities. Do you also have the, the percentage of demotions? Do y'all track demotions?
I will, we, we could do that. I will go back and look at who we would have had last year that went like from a plant engineer that requested. I, I'll just tell you a trend we've not dealt with before. In fan, I'll just give you an example, fans, managers. We've recently had three fans, managers who have come to HR saying, I would just like a job without management responsibility. Let me move to custodian. I don't want the, the shortage of help we have, the responsibilities of management. I just would like to come to work and not have that responsibility. So we've seen an increase in that, but we can go back and look at last year at people who moved from fans, managers to assistants, or assistants to operators and, and plant engineers to, back to custodians.
Now, when you said, I know on one of them it had, that you have weekly, we're, we're trying to go to weekly payments for, for certain hourly groups. Now, did we ever, the, the new people that come in, they had to wait like a month and a half, two months for their first check? Did we ever change that?
That, that will be changed with this transition to weekly payroll. It will dramatically improve how quick new people get a check.
Okay, is that, is that only the classified positions, or is that the teacher positions also?
That is not teachers right now, it's the, all the hourly employees.
So what are we, what are we doing about the, the certified personnel? Because I know they have to wait also. They had to wait also. So if we, we are doing it for the weekly, the hourly employees, what are, what are we doing about the certified personnel? Because they had to wait like a month and a half, two months also.
Certified employees don't have to wait a month and a half or two months.
Teachers, when they start their first paycheck is August 30th, and they may have started August 10th.
Yeah, if they're, if they're a first-year teacher because they work five extra days.
What if they start, I mean, if they start in July, I know they have to go to, to the different classes and stuff.
They have those five workdays.
And that's before August.
No, it, it's typically the first part of August when they do those five days. Do we have some guidance, counselors?
So they don't have to go to like the, they don't still have to go to like the technology conference and those other, the other conferences in the summer that we provide?
No, we, now that we have that five days of planned training for them that we used to not have, we consolidate that into that week of programming for them.
Only thing they would have to do, if they chose to do before that time, and they'd have to do it before the five days, don't have to do it in August necessarily, they have to come in and fill out all the forms to get on payroll, get their benefits. We don't, we don't pay for...
For that part.
For that part of, of coming to work.
So they don't have, they're not required? So they don't have, they're not required to go to the, what's the, what's the...
Summer.
Summer Academy?
Summer Academy, no.
Now, you may have some that, Miss McLeoy could tell you, we have some that choose to do that, but they're not required to do that. Their required extra days start five days before every other teacher's required days. And they're paid at the end of, on the August 30th payroll.
Right. That's been a big plus in terms of them coming in and getting that week. Some, some at the district level, some at the school level.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin-Carlisle. Ms. Laventus Wells.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Lynn, this is my question in reference to the bereavement policy for teachers or for employees in the district. If we reviewed that policy and, as, I have my opinions to put together in reference to when a teacher experiences, if we can, this is what I would like to do, is to change the policy to make it more reasonable for an unimaginable situation that occurs where a child was killed in a home field accident and the parents were teachers or administrators, and you only allowed three days, and then you have to have a doctor's excuse, and then you have to go through all that, and they're experiencing a lot of traumatic kind of thing.
We did, we did look at that with the committee that Mr. Meek chaired about, and compared our policy to others, right?
So you've looked at it?
That was part of the review of our leave policies and bereavement compared to other districts in the upstate at that point in time and our pay practices.
That was actually a board committee that looked at that. We provided information to it. I believe that was maybe within the last two years, Mr. Meek. Does that sound correct? Mr. Meek chaired that committee.
Right, but we also at that time increased the number of personal days for teachers from two to four at that point in time.
I believe bereavement leave is three, three days, Lynn. And we do have sometimes employees that have difficulty dealing with those situations, in which case they can take medical leave for additional time, or they can take personal leave. But that's the way it stands right now.
But does that have to be approved with a doctor's permission? Because I think that's a little cuckoo, a cray cray. But I mean, if I, if I lost, and I don't want to say any of my children because I wouldn't be here. But if I, if something tragedy like that happened while I was teaching and I, dealing with all of this stuff that is unimaginable, and I've got to go get a doctor's slip for after three days, I think that's...
So typically what we would say to someone in that circumstance, you have three days bereavement, you're four days personal leave. If you want more than five additional days, that policy requires that you have to have a doctor's note if it extends beyond five days. And for consistency, we work with that employee to get a note from their doctor.
I'm going to ask that we look at that policy. I just think we need to revisit that and, and we're trying to keep our teachers. And I will tell you, due to the situation and everything that's been happening, and I think we need to work with these parents that have had to deal with this situation. And we've had several this past year and the year before. So I would like to look at that policy, and I'd like to serve on that policy committee. Mr. Meek, and Mr. Lewis, Chairman Lewis, I'm sorry. Want to make sure I go through them. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Laventus Wells. Ms. Morrison Fair.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. My questions also deal with, along the line of Ms. Goodwin-Carlisle and Ms. Laventus Wells, teacher recruitment and teacher sensitivity. On the recruitment side, what, which one of our programs have you found to work best in the district for us of all the programs that you listed? Which one has given us the most bang for our buck?
You mean the alternative programs, right? GATE by far has been more successful because the supports are in place upfront and ongoing. So our retention rate has been higher. And I think those employees feel better supported with the coaching that we put in place for those groups. Plus, they create a cohort that they have spent time in the summer with each other. So they also have that connection.
If that's the case, then how can we increase what we do with GATES? How can we increase that if that's giving us the biggest bang? And the other programs are maybe contributing to our teacher recruitment?
Yeah, that's why you'll see we went from 23 to 53 because we added some subjects. And then if a person came to us with a PACE letter and they could go into GATE, we would move them into that GATE program. Yeah, Margaret, can you get a mic, can you get a microphone, Margaret? Yeah, okay.
So because of the success of GATE, we have continued to add certification areas. But each time we do that, we have to go to the state board to get approval for that. So we do increase the, or have increased over time, the capacity for GATE, which is what you're seeing in terms of those numbers. We don't have a limit on it, so we have 54 candidates this year, which if you look up there, you can see is far greater than any other of the alternative certifications for which we hire, if that makes sense. And they are more successful, so we will continue to add areas of certification to increase our ability to enroll people in our GATE program for certification. The PACE program has many, many, many other areas of certification than we have been able to offer right through GATE so far. But we will continue to look at that and add to it as we can.
And why are you on that subject on recruiting at HBCUs?
Yes.
Did you say we only target South Carolina HBC?
No, ma'am. And I will get you a list. We are actually, because of the virtual option this year and some additional events that have been added, we have, we will go to a lot more, participate in a lot more HBCUs across, actually across the nation this year. But I'll get you a list to share with you. What I would say about HBCUs, and there's a lot of statistics out there right now. There is actually a website you can go to, a Title II website that you can go to that will actually give you the number of participants in those programs. So even at an HBCU, there may not be that many teacher candidates in their teacher programs. So very often, we will find that we get a lot more minority candidates at the bigger colleges and universities just by the sheer fact that they have more, they have a teacher preparation program, they have more candidates just in general. So percentages can kind of skew information. It's actual numbers that we're looking at. We need to know that we're going to places that are going to have the numbers of people that we need, that we can bring back to Greenville with us. So I would say the same thing for the PACE up there. If we hired six and 33% of those are minority, that's a different, you know, and 16.9% of 53, and I can't do that math that fast. We still may have more GATE minority candidates than we do PACE because it's a percentage rather than actual number, if that makes sense. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
But I'll get you those lists, for sure.
Somewhat.
The biggest challenge continues to be encouraging people to go into education.
Absolutely.
And that's what, that's, that's my concern too, is to expand that. Because, you know, education is not the top on the list when it comes to salaries. But there are so many other benefits.
You are correct.
Teaching is such an honorable profession. So, you know, all over the country, I guess, I want to be part of, how can I push that, push people towards South Carolina so that we can take advantage of candidates across the country that may not be on that website?
Yes, now, the Title II website is for that data, to get the data. It's not a website that a candidate would go to. But we advertise nationally. We are connected with international groups as well. We go to recruitment events that are not just for teachers. That is to get folks to come to our GATE program because those are career changers. We do a lot of advertisement for that as well. But we try to make sure that the places that we go to are going to bring the results that we need. We don't want to just go to a place and not, or go to an event that's not going to bring back to us what we're looking for, what we need for our district. So we try to make sure that we're being thoughtful with that process and thoughtful with the cost. But again, the virtual option that most colleges and universities are utilizing at this moment in time have opened up even more places for us to be able to recruit all kinds, all kinds of candidates, so.
Okay, one other question on that recruitment. What, what does your staff say about areas that we have not looked into? All that you're doing, and you're doing a lot.
Are you, you mean for teachers or...?
Yes, teacher recruitment. What areas have we not really?
I know, for example, Alabama, we didn't use to go, we've added some states over the last few years.
Without objection, we'll extend for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. So I think the research of where, the other research factor is, are there some states who produce more teacher candidates than they have jobs? And so that's one of those that Margaret's team looks at that, hey, perhaps, I'm just using this, Ohio has X number of teacher candidates, but they're not hiring at the rate we need people in South Carolina.
So we're really all over the Eastern Seaboard. But we have gone as far as Texas. Texas has quite a few opportunities there. But we have not been as successful getting them to relocate their teacher salaries in some of their cosmopolitan areas are 50,000 to begin. So it's hard to get them to want to leave their area and for a lesser salary, even if the cost of living is less. But we have gone as far as Texas. But we're, we're all over the Eastern Seaboard. And anywhere, again, we're checking out the numbers of candidates available. If they have three and four and five or under 20, you know, and we're competing with the rest of the colleges or the school districts on the Eastern Seaboard, the larger ones, then, you know, that's not necessarily a place that we need to go. If they have 50 or 100, certainly we would want to go there. Candidates, graduating candidates.
And one, thank you very much. One other, last question on teacher retention. That group of teachers who feel like they need to lead a profession and they are not listening to reason for us to keep them, have we thought about letting them work in the virtual side?
We did, you know, the first year, anyone who had a health issue or concern, we placed them first in virtual. This year, we selected virtual people based on their ability to be successful teachers in virtual because that isn't the same. We have reached out to all of those people who are breaching their contract and leaving and saying, what could we do? Is there something we could help? Can we intervene? Could we have a meeting? Could you take leave and get things together in your life? And sometimes we're successful and sometimes we're not. You know, it is just an interesting times, I think, in terms of addressing that, right?
Yeah, and I know you, and I know we're finding up, you know, a lot of times, things that we can't, a lot of situations that we can't control. But I would like for us to look at those people that are leaving, you know, and they're frustrated. And we're putting unbelievable amounts of responsibility outside of teaching and giving instruction to convince them that this is an alternative for virtual, that maybe we can use their skills because there are a lot of, still a lot of good people in that group that's...
And sometimes people who are leaving will say, let me just be a sub because I maybe can work some and get my act together and come back. You know, it just depends on their circumstances. And we've seen more increase in people who need to care for parents. You know, with elderly parents, with the impact of COVID, I think we've seen an increase in people leaving for those reasons as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison Fair. Mr. Meek.
Let me turn my mic on. The, you mentioned the hourly payroll. Is that still scheduled for January online?
Is. We're, got a whole groups of people working almost daily, meeting weekly, and keeping on track to do that.
Are you switching everyone that's on hourly now over to weekly?
Yes, all of the hourly work groups. For example, maintenance, warehouse, fans, transportation, building services.
So everyone that gets the hourly paycheck will be switched over whether they want to go or not?
Correct.
Okay. Bus drivers pay, you mentioned a figure of $11 and something that they ended up with. Is that right?
That, that was pay for starting for fans and custodians. Bus driver, the 11, $12.93, right, or whatever, I got it written down. Bus drivers have a higher starting pay, and bus drivers are the only work group can opt out of the retirement contribution. In state law, bus drivers do not have to participate in the state retirement system, but a custodian does.
Okay, you mentioned a salary schedule comparison. You're working on it?
Correct.
Who, who will that cover?
It is everyone on the building schedule, which are principals and assistant principals. And then everyone on what we call the administrative salary schedule, which would be district leadership all the way down to accountants, those professional employees.
Okay, well, that won't, that won't cover the hourly employees.
No, well, we just participated in a survey for the local upstate of South Carolina. And we have that data that just came in for the upstate on hourly positions.
How did that compare with the others? How did that compare with us to the total upstate?
Still have some cha, our maintenance people are well-paid and very competitive. Bus drivers is an anomaly job, you know, there's some local transportation truck driver jobs. And we're, you know, if you look at our top pay, we would be competitive. But you still have some people in the upstate probably paying $14, $15 an hour for custodians in terms of that survey result.
Okay. I want to commend you on the number of employees that you've run through here this year. I know it's been a challenge. In the HR department, you mentioned, or I think Dr. Oster mentioned that you had been, you'd had additional employees, you had hired additional employees to help you.
We do, we pulled in some temporary employees to help us. We use some hourly folks to help with recruiting. We always bring in some summer help, the volume in the summer.
Okay, what, what have you done in the payroll department, the finance part of it?
So we have added an hourly payroll specialist. And then we're in the process of hiring, two more additions, Robin?
To elaborate on that a little bit, there is a temporary pay account assigned to the HR department. And there's some in other departments in the district. That's where they use to hire temporary help for peak times during the employment season. You may recall that in your general fund budget approval this year, you approved two positions in finance. And they're in the process of hiring both of those now. It was one, you approved one in Esser and one in the general fund. The general fund was directly related to going to a weekly payroll. Is that right, Robin?
Yes, and that...
Two totals, one Esser, one general fund.
Hired and working.
And just as a reminder, you all may recall this, although they have to work closely together, payroll is a finance department function, not an HR function. Looking at comparative salaries and so forth would be an HR function. The employment process is an HR function, but the actual implementation and operation of payroll is a finance department function.
I know when we talked about the hourly, weekly payroll, I thought, you know, because it increased the number of runs, number of payroll that we, you finally got that, didn't you? number of payroll that we, you finally got that, didn't you?
Yes, that's the one general fund position was directly related. There was some transition cost funding in there to hire a consultant to work within our Lawson N4 system. And then to be carried forward in subsequent years, starting this year, was supporting the cost of that position. Because obviously, it doubles the workload of the person doing the weekly payroll. Doesn't exactly double it, but it increases the volume of their workload. And there's still some issues related to that that they're working through. And the primary one being, there are times when they're off payroll that will impact the check they take home. I mean, that's true with a twice a month payroll. It's true with a weekly payroll, but that's part of the challenge in figuring out how to best manage this, where they don't go any longer period of time during the work year without a check than they normally go now. And that has to do with aligning some things.
Remind me again, during the process, during the period of time that you're talking about, Lynn, did we have extra people on board working? Or we, this is what we're going to do in the future?
Now, we, for several years in HR, have had a budget item for temporary help. We don't need people year-round, but as we're starting in January and screening teacher candidates, we have three or four folks who work remotely, who help us vet those candidates, make sure they got all the things they need at the State Department of Ed. And then in the summer, when we're processing that bulk of hires, we bring in some clerical support in HR to help us get all that.
Did any extra help come in for the payroll for finance department? Did you have that in the last year, Robin?
We do through ESER, ESER funding.
When did they go to work? Because I didn't think we had.
Maybe eight months ago. They're helping with ESER, the requirements that we have because of ESER funding.
Okay, so.
Excuse Mr. Meek, without objection, we'll extend for an additional 15 minutes.
Thank you. Now, I had just heard that the payroll department hadn't received any extra help and everyone else got extra help. And now the ESER is all about ESER, it's not the additional work or whatever that's been dealt, about the transfers in and out and whatever.
The additional general fund, when you're advertising, you're advertising that right now, because we didn't hire the person ahead of implementing the weekly payroll. That's that position responsibility, implement weekly payroll. The work they've done on weekly payroll to this point is to determine what method to use to calculate that, how to set up the pay schedules, that sort of thing, not actually running a payroll.
Who was doing that? Who was calculating that? Who was doing that?
That would be people within finance. Robin can speak directly to that.
So you just used the people that you had on hand, so you didn't hire any additional people to do that?
We use current staff.
Okay. Okay, that's where the squeak is coming from, I guess, so, so I just wondered. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Ms. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I want to, there's a lot of details and a lot of kind of specifics, and I'm going to keep my board hat on and not ask a bunch of detailed questions, I hope, kind of stick to that strategic level. So in the numbers you show with regard to diversity, what is our goal? You know, I guess it would have been helpful maybe for me to go back and look, or maybe for you guys to include in this, what we had said in our strategic plan as far as where we wanted to be. But can you talk to me about the benchmark?
So, yes, so in the strategic plan, there's a goal to have ethnic diversity in every school and male teachers in every school, all right? So we were really, really close to 100% of schools having that representation. Then with COVID and virtual, we had some people who were displaced. So we're, I don't have the plan in front of me, but I think we're about 98% of teacher, of schools have some racial diversity. And 100%, I'll get you the exact, because Dr. McCurry's updated the strategic plan, have male teachers in their locations. And it's a challenge because of a single person going into a site sometimes is a difficult position. And so making sure that we put people in and support them and they are retained is an ongoing challenge.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. I appreciate Ms. Fiebey talking about the percentage can be really misleading in terms of what it is you're trying to accomplish. And I think, you know, the, when you look at a school in a community, you want the community to see people that look like them. So, you know, honestly, it may be the way we should be looking at this in our goal setting is a little different from the standpoint of instead of saying, you know, every school needs to have diversity in it. What does the diversity look like so that if we have a population that the diversity rate's 85%, then we should be trying to get more teachers in that school so that you have more role models in that school? So.
And that's where nationally, it is a challenge. In terms of diverse people exiting education programs, you know, Hispanic teachers, for example. You know, it's very difficult. And I happen to have the, for example, teachers, we have 2.5% Hispanic teachers across the district. Well, we have more than 2.5% students. But that becomes an issue of a small number of applicants for a large nation of people wanting to add that diversity.
That's helpful, I think, just framing up a little bit for our conversation when we start thinking about our strategic planning for next year. So in comparison to others, other districts, I mean, are we looking at what's our diversity percentage in those different areas as compared to the nation, other states, other districts like us? Have we done, is that, can you do that? Is that?
We can do, we're working on a presentation now that we would be able to share some of that information. We have the SARA report, that is the report from South Carolina, that we've just submitted our data. So when that report comes out, we could share that with you, and it will show how we compare within South Carolina in general.
So that, help me, Dr. Royster tried to make sure this was clear. On the GATE and the PACE numbers, the PACE numbers we are showing are the PACE candidates within Greenville County.
That we hired, yes.
And what we try to do, if possible, is if they apply to PACE, I think I remember this, we try to redirect.
To GATE.
Those candidates, if possible, if they meet our criteria, into our program.
Yes.
We found ours has more support to it than the PACE one does. I think that's why, I think Margaret mentioned when she was making her comments earlier, that we get, we're getting a higher retention rate out of that program, because we put more support with those candidates than the state does with a PACE candidate. So if we can move them to GATE, we want to move them to GATE.
And I think that's where certainly, if you look at only six candidates in PACE this year.
Yes, yeah, we were, and as we add more subjects approved by the state, you will see less PACE, as long as they meet that criteria. But we don't want to close the window to hire PACE people when we don't have available candidates coming from somewhere else.
Oh, yeah, and I think we.
And we can always look at how we support PACE candidates too, in addition to the state. What can we put in place to help those PACE teachers be successful?
That was kind of the next, the next thing I was going to say, because to Ms. Given Caldwell's point, I remember when we had that conversation about the GPA, you know, using the college GPA, especially particularly if you're talking about a candidate maybe 10 years out of school, using a college GPA to determine, you know, whether or not they can handle the rigor of the program isn't, it's not the greatest benchmark. There's no way to take into account that life experience. So I understand that we had to have some criteria, but.
And we moved, if you remember, Dr. Candace Moore is the director over all alternative programs now. So GATE was her primary focus. But she is also looking at how do we support other alternatively certified people like the PACE folks? You know, and what things can we put in place? And I see that as a challenge for all new teachers, just coming out of a education program. Does not mean every person we hire is 100% ready on their own. They need supports to be effective in a classroom.
On the CATE program, do we similarly have supports? We haven't really talked about that, but I know it's really difficult for candidates. And usually, we're pulling people from the business world to come in and teach welding or whatever.
Right, so we have worked to improve those supports for their success. You know, working with the Career Center directors, working with other, our department, with Karen Cap's department, to make sure we put some of those supports. Because that's, like you said, I've been a welder and I come in to teach. They don't have that background in teaching and how they relate to students. So that's an area that we, you know, we work with them to try to make sure they're successful.
So we added business education to our.
GATE.
Whereas previously, people would have come in.
With their regular business ed, teaching certificate. That, that's, it is a CATE kind of related, but.
That's what I was trying to understand, is it CATE, is that, because business ed, I thought it was CATES.
The actual business ed is a teacher certification, regular traditional certification. Most of those folks are more like our computer teachers in schools and things like that versus an actual career and technology center. Does that make sense? Keyboarding, that kind of thing.
They're in high schools, but those are career, they're CATE classes, right?
There, it might help a little bit, there are CATE teachers that get certified just like a math teacher or science teacher or English teacher. Business ed is the biggest example. They used to refer to the other teachers that did not go through that process as TNI teachers, trade and industry teachers. So if you think about welding, building construction, auto body.
Firefighting.
Auto shop, firefighting, law enforcement, almost any like that, similarly, mechatronics is another one. Those you can come straight from industry jobs and be certified based on your job experience. And they get a test, areas from area to area. If you meet the criteria on that test and your job experience is verified, is applicable, they enter at, on the state scale, zero years, master's degree. Several years ago, you all approved us providing experience opportunity at the district level. So if they had 10 years' experience as a welder, they go 10 years, master's degree. But those are areas of cosmetology's that way, barbering's that way. The primary areas for which there's traditional certification is business ed. Some of the health careers have a certification, but there's some you can teach without it. I don't, I just don't remember the distinction.
But the classes they're teaching, kids get career credit, right? It's career and technology credits they're getting for those classes?
Yes.
Yes.
So those classes are, what, what are the business ed classes that get?
So like keyboarding, computer technology kinds of classes.
JFD.
It would be things like GATE, Gateway Technology, thank you, Project Lead the Way, those types of courses that are approved by the state. For the CTE, keyboarding, we don't ask teach anymore because it's not, doesn't meet the requirements for the state anymore. But like coding, those types of classes.
And there's, was a shortage of people coming out of traditional programs with that certification, which is why we're able to add that to our GATE subject list.
So there's a specific sort of training that we have for them to be able to do that. And they're like, we're looking for them to come out with any kind of bachelor's degree and their training job. Is that what that looks like?
Not for the.
What is?
For which, for which one?
Well, for the business ed.
Business ed through GATE, I believe that would require a four-year.
Yes, yes. So four-year degree in, just a bachelor's degree in something.
In an equivalent area, in an equivalent area.
Equivalent area. But must have a bachelor's degree. Right, okay. But then that's just sort of on the job? Because some of the things y'all mentioned is kind of all over the place as far as what you might be teaching. So that's kind of just on the job curriculum that we help them develop? And that's because we've had a shortage in that area to get people to teach those things? Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Online programs for recruitment, there's a proliferation right now of, you know, online university. And we can see more of that, because it's really accelerated online learning. So how are we either, are we recruiting? Or are we working with any of those, those, they help most of their programs?
So we have a number of student teachers that come out of online programs. That, I don't know the number, Margaret may know better than I do, how many of those student teacher programs. We have to be careful because the program must be approved by the South Carolina Department of Ed in order for people to get certification. So we preach all the time, whether it's your basic teaching or your master's in administration, you have to make sure you're going to a program that's approved by the state. Because not all online programs are. And we've had some people who've invested money and gone to programs that then they could not do what they thought they could do in the state of South Carolina. So that's a critical part of that.
So we have a number of partnerships, not specific to the university, but those folks live in our communities, and so they get the same advertisements, the same information that anybody else would receive for an event that we may be having, Shining Stars or anything like that. And so, but they have selected their own online program, which could be in Arizona. But that person is going to be, we will reach that person in our communications because they live in our community. They're going to work where they live, they're just doing the online program in, of a program that they selected. But then we do have to partner with that program. So very often, we'll have, say, like a teaching assistant who has decided to get their certification, teacher certification degree through, and I'll give an example, Liberty's online program, for example. Or it could be any, it could be in our area or far, far away. And then we work with them to even do student teacher placements and that sort of thing. If they're getting their degree or if they live in the area and they have their degree from an online program, they certainly reach our, we reach them with our advertisements information because they're seeking jobs just like anybody else would.
We are targeting, we haven't really kind of tried to vet the different online programs and figure out if there's certain programs that we should be recruiting from, just like we do with.
No.
Breaking order.
We don't necessarily target that, we do monitor, and we collect some of that information in terms of where they get teachers from in terms of online programs, just as we would with any other college.
I guess, again, just kind of thinking strategically, long-term, I think we're going to have to incorporate more of that as our pipeline gets smaller and smaller and shrinking more and more, that we're going to have to realize people are embracing that. And I guess that's a good point, I don't know, if we advertise, if we somewhere there's a resource that we're letting people know who does and doesn't have programs, online programs that meet the state's criteria.
And a lot of teachers now are able to do their master's programs online, or the bulk of the program online, which helps them move from bachelor's pay to master's.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. We have three more speakers, so without objection, we'll extend for an additional 15 minutes.
I'll try to go quickly. So the, South, there was a listing, South Carolina Create?
Yes.
Is that?
It's a program the state has that pays for teachers to get their special ed certification. And we, it's an application process. It has been very successful for us, and we've used it successfully.
And we create to give a grant through the South Carolina Department of Education for those to get their degree in special ed. So we certainly advertise that, in particular with our, a lot of our pages will send out the information through the Commerce Department and let subs and folks know about that. What that does is if they are able to, it pays for their, basically their degrees. You can have a bachelor's degree and be able to get your certification, or you can take classes. So it's different levels of. So it's different levels of entry in terms of where they are in the process. How we use it in terms of recruiting is what we have discovered with elementary certified teachers who have.
Okay. Elementary certified, yeah, sorry. Elementary certified teachers who typically have most of the requirements to add on a special ed certification. So we will look, identify some of those folks who in prior years did not get elementary jobs, but would be interested in taking a special ed position. And if they have enough credits towards that special ed certification, then we can get them a permit for the year. So they have to have 12 hours towards it. Most elementary certified folks have anywhere from six to nine hours towards the required hours to get the permit. And they can get that additional three or additional six by an April 1st or April 30th deadline that the state sets to.
It'll do, you can get, use it for teaching certificate because that's specialty or a bachelor's program.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, all right. And has that been around for a while?
Yes, it has. It used to be called Project Create. I mean, I know it's been around for over, well over 10 years.
And we have, how many people have we had to take advantage of that?
I'd have to get that number off and on. We'll have a handful every year.
That's good, because we know that's a place where we need more, more help and more teachers.
Yes.
So then the last thing is just related to the conversation about hiring our hourly employees and the turnover that we're having right now. And the difference in the pay increase is that 9% retirement. And I think the state retirement system now isn't what it used to be in terms of being a draw to bring people in, right? Because.
It takes longer.
You got that rule of 90, right? So the number of people who can meet that threshold is very small.
And if, and if you're at that wage rate, thinking 30 years out is hard.
Right, right. So my question is, have we looked at, or should we consider, or do we know if other districts have done this, contracting services so that instead of employees having to be part of the system, you know, we use a third-party vendor, our contractor, that we could either let them do it independently, or, you know, what I'm seeing a lot of right now with a lot of municipal governments is they're doing staff augmentation, where they're paying a contractor for the service, and then that contractor's placing people. And they're not just kind of coming in as a vendor, they're actually paying to come in. So have we looked at that as a way to get those salaries up? Is that something we could consider?
We've most seriously looked at transitional employment, i.e. you start with a contractor and then convert over to our payroll. Our experience, ours in this district, mine in other districts, you just, quite honestly, when you're, particularly if you're big enough to be able to do it professionally, you do not get the same level of work and responsiveness out of a contractor for food service, for custodial maintenance, or for drivers, bus drivers. In fact, the second-largest district in the state has contract bus drivers, and they're struggling to have enough drivers. And they put, quite honestly, they put more money in it than we do. One of the things that you find in dealing with contract services, they don't only have to do what you do, they got to make a profit in addition to that. So if it's, particularly if it's repetitive work, we hire people to run those things that are experienced in it, so it's not a side job for somebody, or it's not the way it might be run in a smaller place, we get much higher levels of service by doing our own. But we have looked at transitional employment, a lot of companies use that. You start off on a payroll of a temporary agency or a contract service agency, then you transition. Of course, I assume that not a lot of bus drivers have taken advantage of the fact you, that is one of the few jobs where you can elect not to be in the retirement system, which removes that 9%. I think we're now, our lowest starting pay, I believe, is 1243 an hour, and not right? Robin, do you have it in front of you? Across all, across all segments.
12.
And, and, you know, we may need.
93, 1293.
1293.
That was the.
You all approved of pretty significant increase to that this year, and we're probably going to need to look at that going forward. But we also have to look at what other positions does that begin to run into? For example, the upper end of bus driver pay, while it's not at yet, at the pay for a first-year teacher, it is beginning to approximate pay for a first-year teacher, which I think is about $27 an hour, and right now, they top out at 21. So there, we're looking at a number of strategies there, but I don't think it matters, because you kind of go back to Lynn's example from earlier, it doesn't matter where you go in this community or in this state. People don't have enough employees across almost all sectors of the economy. So it is, it's a struggle. I'm not sure when it's going to end. We thought that the decrease in the unemployment compensation that was causing people to actually take home more than they took home working, we thought when that kicked in and went back to a, if you want to call it a normal level of unemployment compensation, which it did, what, two months ago? But we haven't necessarily seen an uptick in applicants for those jobs, and I think you'll see the same thing really throughout the community. I was talking with somebody in this room yesterday that they'd gone to dinner, or tried to, on Saturday night, and the first two places they went, 45-minute wait, not because he didn't have space, had plenty of empty tables, he had a lot of workers. So it's being felt across all segments. It's easier for us to fix some of it. You know, we don't like to do pre-prepared, prepackaged food at food service, but that, doing some of that becomes a partial solution there. Custodial overtime becomes a solution, but the one that we have the greatest challenge still with is bus driving, because although overtime's a solution, it's not a solution that gets people where they need to be on time. Really doesn't matter what time you clean the building, as long as it gets cleaned. If you can speed up food service by prepackaging some stuff, that, that helps. But that's the one that hurts us the most, and we're still struggling, though we do have, I think now for the first time, double-digit, first time in probably three years, double-digit numbers in training for bus driving. Barely, barely double digits.
Hopefully, we keep them. I don't know if we have a requirement that they work so long before they take their certification and go to somewhere.
We don't, they do miss out. You know, we give them a bonus for being here.
And driving.
Running into anything during the year. So they would miss out on that, but.
Well, so I guess just knowing where state benefits have gone in the last 10 years in terms of their desirability, and it really looking like a benefit that people want to take advantage of, it seems like if we consider, you know, things we tried 20 years ago, you look at KATE, education, right? We said we needed to get it out of the high school so we could have a special center, and then we realized if we put some of it back in the high school, our numbers grows by, you know, 1,000%. So just looking at the industry and figuring out, do we need, if there are things we can do to sort of mitigate that problem we have of that 9% off your salary, and then the fact that you're paying into a retirement system that's not, again, it just isn't as desirable as it used to be to be a state, part of the state system. So the last thing I want to say before I give it before is, I am so happy that we have that EAP program. I don't remember how many years ago we approved that, but I remember it was a big, a big investment when we decided to do it. And, you know, I believe that across the board, emotional support for students and for staff, and helping us all develop resiliency strategies is super important. And I have heard from people who have said, "Thank you so much. My family has taken advantage of this." It's not just employees, but my family has taken advantage of this in getting emotional support that we need, and getting help when we're in crisis. So I appreciate that the administration brought that to us many years ago, and that it's been, been used effectively and taken advantage of. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Wells, Ms. Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I'll be as quick as possible. Ms. Gibbs, thank you for this report. This is very interesting to me. I'm going to focus specifically on, mostly on special education. I'm grateful to see that we have added that to the gate, or expanded the gate to include that. I see the hourly work group statistics that are, that open jobs for those three categories that you provided on one of the slides, but do we have, do we have open positions right now in special education?
We have a couple that we are using, some long-term subs, we've redeployed some people from special ed services, we are interviewing and making some offers to December grads. Don't have a specific number, but it is a challenge. I mean, one of the conversations about someone wanting to leave and breach their contract with one of my employee relations folks back that, you know, yesterday was a special ed teacher. So, you know, it has been something that can change daily, and I'm trying to find those committed people to fill those jobs, and then having less substitute capacity is a challenge.
Are we, is the deficit larger in the instructional piece, the teachers? Or I know we have paraprofessionals that fill roles within special education. I mean, does it vary depending on the school? I mean.
I think, we'd have to kind of look. I think some of it is the categories of classrooms, what certifications required. I think for aides, that used, when I first came, an aide stayed, and stayed, and stayed. I think we've seen more turnover in aides just because of the same situation with some of our other positions. And I'mira was talking yesterday about, you know, you didn't used to have an aide leave in the year, middle of the year either, and they're finding other opportunities or choosing to stay home. So I think those are just constant things that we have had to face. And although we've hired 400 subs, we provide training for subs in special ed, it's still that commitment to make them comfortable in every classroom.
Okay. So obviously, with my special education background, I get a lot of concerns expressed to me, but probably one of the more generic concern, and I say generic, meaning it's more of a general, broad concern, is class sizes. Are we, I know we function within the, I guess, is it DHEC? I'm looking at Doug, is it DHEC that mandates the number of people, the number of students that can be in a class, or is there, is there another?
I think that's, it says the Department of Ed, right?
Department of Ed, okay. So I know we function within our, what we're required, or what we're, but obviously, I'm of the mindset that the smaller classes benefit everyone. So if we are successful in some of these recruiting efforts and in the, with the gate program and all these things, how will this benefit and impact us the most? In other words, what might we be able to accomplish within special ed that we may not be able to necessarily have today? And is that just less subs, or is that smaller classes, or?
I think it would be filling all those positions and having consistency with those people staying in those classes, not leaving, you know, and not having those openings. That's been the challenge, because this year, that's been more of a challenge than normal, I think, that we've had. I do think that having substitutes train to work in, because you have teachers who have surgery, who have those kinds of things. I think those would be pluses. In terms of reducing class size, that is a budget issue, because then that becomes additional allocations. You know, we in HR work from here the allocated positions each school has, and we're trying to fill those teaching positions with qualified, certified folks, right?
One thing that would benefit, we started seven, eight years ago, Jeff, moving low, low-incidence classes into home schools. Excuse me. So students would go where they would ordinarily be zoned to attend, or where their siblings are zoned to attend. We didn't expand that last year, or probably even this year, last year's budget, nor last year, or the previous year's budget, because there wasn't a reason to expand it, because we knew we wouldn't get enough teachers. So it would allow us to go back and, and continue along that path of putting classes out in schools, which would be that, that child's zoned or neighborhood school. That would be one positive, which really goes back to your question about, those are smaller class sizes, because they didn't have the incidence rate that ordinarily would simply, on its own, justify a class there. So that would be one positive. The other is, there's still, though this is changing, there's still an overabundance of early childhood certified graduates. And we need to try to convert those people. We've talked to the colleges about trying to convert them while they're still in college to be certified in special ed or other areas where we're struggling to find enough people. Now, for a while, we had an abundance of elementary candidates, and they still have a good pull, but it's not like what it once was. There's still an overabundance of people in, with early childhood. In fact, there's probably a backlog of a number of years graduates in early childhood that never end up teaching, because there's just not that many positions in early childhood. And they very, they have very much narrowed their opportunity to be hired. Ms. Hogan can probably speak to whether she has any current openings for special ed teachers right now or not. Troz.
As Ms. Hogan approaches, we have three additional speakers, so without objection, we'll extend for another 15 minutes.
I didn't hear the question. It was, do we have any vacancies? Is that?
Well, that was one, that was one of my questions, is do we have any? She provided data on the hourly employee vacancies.
Sure. We do. I will say, we typically fill them with long-term subs, and we are doing that in most of the cases. We have also rearranged some staff and moved people from one position to another. We've taken, we re-looked at different ways we could serve folks. For instance, we have an itinerant preschool teacher that we dispersed her caseload and moved her into a classroom. So we're looking at all options that we have for our students, but, you know, it is challenging right now. At this point, normally, we have a lot more December grads we're counting on, and we're still looking at the December grads.
Okay, and so my last question that kind of goes along with this, because we talk about challenges, and retention's obviously one across the board, but, and I know we do exit interviews, correct?
Correct.
Do we do that with every single person?
We provide an opportunity for teachers to do an exit interview. Some select to do that, some we have to follow up with, and some, as I say, people don't always want to give you a lot of information, what they may, we don't know if they're telling us all 100% accurate information.
Okay, so on the, for the ones that do choose to provide that feedback to us as a district, what do we do with that information?
We share that with the assistant superintendents for their schools that they're responsible for, so then that they can follow up on any issues or concerns.
Okay. All right, thanks. I think I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley, Ms. Dillon.
Hey, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I was particularly interested in the list of where, let me see if I can find it, where your recruiting efforts are for new teachers. And I wondered if you've noticed, particularly this year, that there's been an increase in teachers applying from other states that have relocated?
We have relied on teachers coming from other states the entire time I've been here. So, I mean, a lot of that is during the COVID, the first year of COVID, we had the lowest teacher turnover that we've had, and I think that was a result of people not wanting to leave what they knew, and the fact that Greenville's spouse transfers declined, because we get a lot of teachers because people, spouse moves into Greenville, and we lose teachers because their spouses leave Greenville, their companies transfer them, they take jobs. So, but we have traditionally had, you seem to be more successful if you have recruited teachers, let's just say from Michigan, and we have five or six of those who have stayed with Greenville County for four or five years, and then we can connect people moving here with those people, then that kind of creates a group of folks. I do think we have had, there are people moving to Greenville from other states, so I would anticipate if they're trying to leave California or New York, we would pick up people as a natural that they're moving to Greenville. But I don't know that we've seen a significant, other than, I think COVID slowed down people moving in general over the last couple of years.
So I would, the only thing I would add to that is, I don't know that we have seen an increase of people from other states, but we do have success in recruiting at out-of-state events, new teachers. We also have a lot from surrounding districts, I mean, surrounding states, so Georgia and North Carolina, we tend to pick up a number of. North Carolina, we, we tend to pick up a number of folks from surrounding states. And we actually picked up 146 teachers this year from surrounding, from districts across the state. We got that information too. So I don't know that I see an increase, but I do, we do find success. Our biggest purpose for recruiting out of state generally is for our secondary education majors. Colleges and universities again don't produce as many graduates in those areas, so we do have to expand out of state to get enough because Greenville is so large and we compete with all the, so if we're recruiting from USC and Carol Clemson and all of our, all of our partner school districts, they just don't have that many secondary education majors.
Math, science.
Our people graduating, yeah, math and science and so forth. So that's when the alternative programs became so critical, but also that's why the out-of-state recruitment is critical as well. We generally can, though we do recruit elementary and early childhood from out of state, we typically pick up most of those from in-state events.
Well, you mentioned California and New York. I'll use those as examples. If mandates there become even more severe than they are now and more people choose to leave those areas, I think it would be interesting to know if our state chooses to have more freedoms than New York and California choose, it, it might be interesting to know the data of how many teachers come from those areas specifically for those reasons so that we know they came because our state hasn't implemented the same mandates that they have. I don't know if, if it's really ethically possible to recruit current teachers working in California and New York, but.
A lot of that depends on the contract structure and if people are, most teachers look for jobs for the following year generally, right? So we should, we could see, we would, we'll be able to tell where people live when they apply within our system.
But, but is it ethic to recruit there now?
Absolutely.
Yeah. We start, we are starting recruiting now for next year. I mean, we don't wait.
But I mean, for experienced teachers to?
Absolutely. I mean, anybody that, so there, I'll give Michigan, for example, there are some of there, when we go to, to those recruitment events, they will invite their alumni who are usually current teachers in their area to come to those events as well. So not, not all, but some of the events that we go to do have current teachers who are able to participate in that college or university event. And so, yes, we do actually pick up some, some regular certified teachers who are currently working there. You know, all of our advertisements, we're, we're on, we advertise in, I'm trying to think of the name of one of the media, but anyway, we, we do advertise our events. We also advertise our district in general. And so if you're looking at any kind of job change or whatever, you, you would be able to participate at, you know, so yes, it's ethical, we do. I went, so we go to California and set up, you know, an opportunity, but our own Shining Stars event is not just for people who are right out of colleges and universities, it's for anybody who wants a teaching job in Greenville. And so our advertisement is such that we get folks who are current teachers as well as who are going to be new to the profession, career changers and so forth. And we even set it up so that they can meet with our folks about our GATE alternative options as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Mr. Suddeth. I think that is then our last person with questions. So without objection, we'll move on to item 3.02, the report. Yes. Oh, we need to take it. We need to update the program, so we're going to take a two-minute break. There's a problem with the live feed, and so they're having to reset something.
Scheduled for November, we're going to take it off the agenda for today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. We are running a little behind schedule here, but we are on item 3.02, the report on summer trainings. Dr. Royster.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. As is tradition, going back 100 years in American education, we talk about what we did this summer. So we've continued that for several years. This year, we're maybe about a, a month behind, but there was a lot of training that went on this summer and across all segments of employee work groups, really. And so Ms. Cap's going to talk with you about that, give you a summary of it, and you can see the types of training and the numbers of individuals that participated in those trainings. Ms. Cap?
Thank you, Dr. Royster. Good morning, all. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you our summer training report. Our district, as you know, provides extensive opportunities to develop instructional, administrative, operational, and support personnel. We want for every employee a strong system that inducts, supports, advances skills, and builds leadership. Today, I'm going to highlight for you key training aligned to district priorities, most of it provided through in-house expertise. This summer, in a total of 755 sessions, we seeded nearly 17,000 participants and over 40,000 hours were credited toward professional development. Our Summer Academy continues to provide the rich learning opportunity for employees in all instructional, administrative, and support roles, and is a major hub for employees sharing of best practice with their colleagues. Seeding over 2,400 across four days, we awarded nearly 5,000 hours credit. Our focus includes core strategies to serve all learners and respond to individual student needs, and we supported high school teachers in the transition to instruction in block schedules at every location. Professional learning for social emotional awareness and intentional practice was conducted in 39 sessions, serving over 1,200 participants who earned nearly 3,200 hours of credit. Highlights included ACE's training, trauma-informed practices, social emotional learning for class in the classroom, other classroom supports for behavioral concerns, and we trained all nurses and behavior interventionists in mental health first aid. The Upstate Technology Conference is a high-demand annual events here in Greenville. Our teachers learn and present with their colleagues within and beyond the district. The highlights this year were very much about using digital learning to our advantage. Certainly, quality over quantity is something we're all trying to embody in everything that we do. Virtual reality was a highlight, student choice in assignments through choice boards and other ways to engage children through making choices about their learning, and formative assessments. UTC was rebranded UTC at Home. It was virtual, as was the Summer Academy. Our Special Education Department delivered multiple training opportunities for teachers and administrators. In over 100 sessions, 1,400 participants earned 40, nearly 4,400 hours of credit. We targeted summer reading programming. We provided behavior support training, expanded our understanding of universal design for learning. We held a game changers Behavior Institute for those who teach students with emotional disabilities, and we held a summit for folks who support students with intellectual disabilities. We are very pleased to say that we have six locations participating and 64 teachers enrolled in the Clemson University Teacher Learning Progression. This is a partnership funded through a $3 million federal grant to Clemson where they use artificial intelligence technology to help to make course recommendations and route recommendations or pathway recommendations to teachers based on their needs and interests. So they are providing for STEM teachers, certainly helping us with those, that effectiveness, the retention, and raising student achievement in those STEM course areas. They are, they're offered personalized advanced credentials, and all of this coursework is at no cost to the teacher. You'll see the schools that are participating there and as we continue that work with Clemson. Our schools consistently invest time in the summer to develop in areas aligned with their own school priorities. In 147 sessions, 1,622 participants earned nearly 7,000 hours of credit. Highlights this year, and frankly, a focus in many years, is those deep conversations about curriculum and unit planning. New teacher launch is held at virtually every location, welcoming those teachers new to the building. Conscious discipline, leader in me, and building strong PLCs through that unit design and use, and meaningful use of assessments was part of what goes on in those schools. We've talked a lot about GATE this morning in this room. Those 53 new GATE teachers this summer spent 15 days together in a pre-service institute. 31 of those hours, or roughly five of those days, one week, was working alongside their GATE coach. This is the first time we've brought the GATE coach to spend the week with them. We're very pleased with the results thus far in getting that relationship launched. And they also participate, along with all induction teachers across the district, in our four-day induction institute. Instruction in the institute certainly supports cohort building, the relationships, communication, and time management needed to be an effective teacher. They work with those coaches on classroom rigor and student management, and they work to understand how to meet the learning needs of diverse students. I mentioned our induction institute. You know that our general front, general fund adds four years to a first-year teacher's time investment so that they, and this institute ensures that they have a strong start and that $42,515 minimum pay. In the four days that they spend together, and second-year teachers come back for two days, we supported over 500 teachers with 11,000 hours of professional learning. Annette Bro, a nationally recognized author, was the keynote speaker for this group. They all celebrated first-year teacher success awards from the prior school year. And instruction for all included understandings of professionalism and district expectations, establishing that classroom, educator mental health, mentor relationships, and social emotional learning. They then break out by level and do deep dives in the area of content and instructional Just before students arrive at the beginning of the school year, when all staff have come back to work, on a single day, teachers gather in district-wide PD. In 65 sessions, over 3,000 teachers attended. You will note a focus on core content reading and special education processes, along with art, arts collaboration sessions that served nearly 400 teachers. All career and technology education teachers at the middle school, the high school, and the career centers this year are working to implement the Career Tree philosophy with their students. The Career Tree, which was rolled out to 226 attendees, is designed to connect students to their why, to their future. Teachers are taught how to show students what is possible and how to get there through their schooling. It includes career exploration, goal setting, and self-discovery, and students are able to see the relevance of their education and therefore perform at a higher level. Mark Perna is the author and originator of the Career Tree. All of our career teachers are developing a Career Tree that is personalized to our curriculum here in Greenville County, and we are grateful to have Mark Perna coming to us in February to present to every principal and all of the counselors and assistant principals in our county. Our operational and support offices set the conditions for schools to serve students at an optimal level. Training in each of these departments ensures an industry standard, ensures industry standard and high-quality work, and supports the development of leadership capacity. In our Building Services and Maintenance Department, 150 plant engineers and groundkeepers were trained in OSHA lift standards. You'll see that that's a mobile elevated worker platform certification that they earned this summer through OSHA, and we're very proud to know that. We are very much looking forward to the return of our custodial college next summer. We've not been able to hold that for two summers running. In our Transportation Department, we trained or licensed 22, 21 new drivers and 15 new aides, 600 drivers, aides and subs, virtually all who work in transportation, attended a four-day, attended training across four days in order to be refreshed in critical safety and prevention skills, as well as procedures to support students with special needs. Our Food and Nutrition Services Department managed, served, served safe food handler trainings for assistant managers. 13 new employees were involved in 54 hours of training. Thirteen new employees were involved in fifty-four hours of training, that composite fifty-four hours, and in our back-to-school in-service for ninety-two managers. The focus was on fan standards, menu updates, USDA regulations, and getting back to normal operations, all of that while serving nearly three hundred and forty thousand summer meals. Finance and Human Resources Departments, they oriented all new principals, all new secretaries, all new bookkeepers, and they held multiple sessions to report required processes. Secretaries are increasing their efficiency using Google applications. And HR oriented every new employee to our district in twenty-seven virtual sessions, and there were nearly six hundred participants in required substitute training. You may know that annually, substitute must attend training, and you'll see that they selected one of the following: Mini Learned Google Classroom, or ACEs, or Classroom Management. We continue our partnership with Greenville Technical College, equipping supervisors for increasing responsibilities in leadership and management. Our goal is to provide a standard of training and practice to enhance success for those roles. We take advantage of workplace, workforce, pathway scholarship funds in order to certify these employees. You'll see that thirty-five of our supervisors thus far have earned the supervisory certificate, and that's eighteen have earned the Leadership and Management Certificate. We added this last school year, three human resources certifications, and five Lean Six Sigma certificates. So we'll be moving even more into those areas in the future. On the instructional side, we held several summer sessions focused on leadership interest and capacity for both teachers and current administrators. Teachers learned to support other teachers and to develop their own coaching and team leadership skills, while administrators extended their capacity for instructional leadership. There were seventy-four participants in the Leader Training Institute for Athletic Coaches. New this school year, every new administrator, assistant administrator, has an off-site mentor. So there's training for mentors, and there are network meetings and opportunities for mentors with mentees in same-level networks. These assistant principals are able to reach out to these mentors at any time to support them as thought partners and to support them with processes. And the mentors are trained to listen, to discern the difference between an assumption an assistant principal might be making that could lead them down a wrong path, to an assertion, maybe, and to help them understand the difference between, here's a decision I'm making based on fact, and here's a decision I'm making that might be filled with emotion. And so these skilled mentors really learn a lot about listening and communication and having difficult conversations with others. The mentors grow in their own leadership capacity and their ability to use these skills in their buildings day-to-day, as much as they support these new AAs and APs to be successful as they begin their new role. Participants selected for our Leadership Academies, API, and what we call ILA, also began their work in opening summer sessions, building the skills needed to elevate the success of their teachers and their students. We have twenty-five this year in the Instructional Leaders Academy, and we have ten in our eleventh cohort of the Aspiring Principal Institute. Both of these are application process and processes, and folks are selected for these. We encourage every assistant principal in this district, at some point sooner than later, to engage in the Instructional Leaders Academy, and we view those who are selected for the Aspiring Principal Institute as those who are nearly ready to become a school principal. The Greenville County Schools' Principal Induction Program replaces and enhances the state programming required of all first-year principals. All new principals in Greenville County, whether new to the role or new to the district, participate in our program. During the summer, they developed a hundred-day plan. How do they enter that building successfully, develop the relationships, and establish a culture of learning? And then they continue through the year to continue to develop the management, communication, and leadership skills that are needed instructionally for their schools to be successful. All have a peer mentor for two years, and the sixteen noted at the bottom, experienced principals are serving first and second-year principals. They have two years of a formal mentor. Our Superintendent's Leadership Summit this year offered the opportunity to reflect on our progress toward our district goal of Graduation Plus for all students. After the superintendent's challenge to each of us to renew our focus and elevate results on Graduation Plus, our principals and directors collaborated together in a series of conversations in a World Cafe model to answer the question, so what's standing in our way if we expect at least ninety percent of our children to graduate with a true Graduation Plus status? How can we elevate our results? And then how could Essor Funding possibly help us with that? So we spent a day deep down in our practices and what we can do to make things better and ensure Graduation Plus for each of our students. That's all I have for you, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Our first speaker is Ms. Goon-Cowall.
All right. I have a question first before I make my comments. Okay, on, I don't know which slide it is, the slide about the Clemson University Teacher Learning Progression. What is the process that y'all use to choose the participating schools in these programs?
Clemson was targeting middle-level teachers, middle-level STEM teachers. And so we spoke with the assistant superintendents and with the academics folks. We invited any middle school who wanted to participate and ready to move forward, but we focused on making very certain that those whose schools have STEM as a focus were definitely engaged in this learning. So Clemson will actually expand the breadth of how many seats they have across the three years of this grant, and we will continue and invite other schools and additional teachers from any of the schools to come on board with this program.
So do not all of the middle schools have a STEM program?
I would say it's likely that all middle schools have STEM programming in their school, and of course, our science and technology standards now are STEM standards. But we have schools who focus on project-based learning. If you think about Rudolph Gordon School, for example, and they're developing a little bit deeper level of STEM and STEAM focus in order to prepare those students to move on to Fountain Inn High School, it would be a school-wide focus as opposed to classroom-by-classroom pedagogy.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you the problem that I'm having with some of these participating locations that we are choosing, whether it's them or us that's choosing them, because I mean, I had a problem with that about the gifted and talented grant being over at the Sterling School. But with this, I don't see it across the district. I see certain schools in certain areas, but what about those schools in Greer, Blue Ridge, Lakeview, or Riverside? I don't see any of those schools, those participating in these grants. And I was wondering if it's the district that's choosing these participating schools, or it's the people that's giving us these grants? Because we're supposed to be doing this across the district, and I'm just seeing certain locations.
Well, what you're seeing here is a year one of an offering from Clemson, which we put out there to all, but we then also, frankly, Dr. McDonald and I reached out to those specific schools where the school-wide focus was very much leaning toward STEM or STEAM. Severe Middle School, when I was there, we moved to become a STEAM school, and this was an opportunity for those individual teachers to deepen those understandings that they already had a base for. But it was not a matter of pick and choose, it was a matter of ensure that those who say they have a school-wide focus are absolutely engaged in this program. That was the beginning. All of them are invited and can come on to this program, and it's all personalized and self-paced, so there are multiple opportunities and ways to go about benefiting from this program.
So this is, you say it's a three-year grant?
Right.
And they will bring more schools on yearly?
Yes.
So it's not just gonna be these six locations?
It's up, if a school doesn't choose to do it because they have another focus, or they are deep into another school-wide focus, then no one at the district's going to force them to do this. This is about ways that you instruct in your classroom that generally involves project-based learning, sometimes collaboration with teachers across hallways. There's a lot to STEM and STEAM instruction.
So you're telling me that most of the schools on the outskirts are not having a focus on STEM, really?
It depends on how far your outskirts go.
I mean, I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking Blue Ridge, I'm talking Greer. I see with my middle, but I mean, you know, I'm trying to understand how these locations are chosen.
Well, of those six, of those six, two of the three are the feeders for Fountain Inn High School. So it's important that their STEM program align so that when the students reach Fountain Inn, they're adequately prepared. And that's been part of the design of Fountain Inn High School since we developed the program for it. It goes all the way back to the elementary schools, of which that would be Rudolph Gordon, the pre-K to five part, and Fountain Inn Elementary. And we put some programs in both of those places at the outset to help prepare students as they move forward through that feeder pattern. So that's the reason, that's the reason that Bryson and Rudolph Gordon are there. Severe Middle School is there because, you may recall, when we put into place the engineering program at Wittenberg, we set up a middle school to have a path forward for students coming out of Wittenberg that were zoned to Wittenberg. And the students zoned to Wittenberg are predominantly zoned to go to Severe Middle School. And in fact, when Ms. Cap was still the principal there, we actually put the basis of that program in place to provide a next step for the students who are zoned to Wittenberg. So that's why three of those are up there. And then my take on the other three is, schools were offered the opportunity, these responded or were encouraged to respond because they have school-wide programs in place. There's a difference in having a school focus on STEM and having STEM as part of your instruction. There wouldn't be a middle school in the district that doesn't have STEM as part of its instruction, but it may not be, or isn't, its school-wide focus. For example, that's not a school-wide focus at LEAK, just for an example.
So was that a prerequisite, that it had to have a school-wide focus?
I think the prerequisite was, you have to show interest first, and then my understanding, we went to the ones that have a school-wide focus and said, you need to be interested in this.
Is Fisher not on that pathway between Wittenberg and Fountain Inn?
Fisher has a highly-developed program that's already in place there. And Fisher is not a feeder school for Fountain Inn. The feeder pattern for Fountain Inn is Rudolph Gordon, excuse me, and Bryson.
And please note, Ms. Goon-Cowall, this is not the package of who will ever do this. This was our first year engaged in the program, and the schools who had folks participate in the first year and into that first summer. So they have other folks who will come on board in those next cohorts, and the opportunities are available, but it takes more than just one teacher at, as you call it, an outlier school, wanting to be a part of this particular grant program. This involves teams of teachers and grade levels who do a lot of collaboration around coordinated interdisciplinary units. And so it's not a, hey, I want to sign up for this because I can go get my master's in teaching and learning, okay? This is about multiple folks in a building committing to do this kind of work.
We also don't...
Your individual classroom.
We also don't want, nor do we want to encourage, schools taking on more initiatives than they can support. For example, there's three middle schools that are obviously excluded for this, and I wouldn't think we would encourage them to do this, because they, one of them already has implemented Avid, and the other two are in the process of it, which is a school-wide implementation innovative program. Well, they need to be focused on that, not on this. You can't have multiple focus, then nothing becomes your focus. So Tanglewood, Berea, and Lakeview are focused on Avid at the middle school level.
Let me ask you this, since you brought that up about the focus of the Avid program. This was something that the schools chose to do. Avid is not. That's something that the district put in place at those schools.
That would be, that would not be entirely accurate. It was put in place at Lakeview by the late principal there, who brought it into that school. We saw the success that it had there. We've looked at the national information, and then, yes, we brought it into place at the other two schools that needed it, because of academic improvements that need to occur there.
I need some more information, but I'll talk to you separately.
About Clemson or...
About, yeah, a couple of different programs.
Thank you, Ms. Goon, thank you, Ms. Goon-Cowall, Ms. Mosley.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cap. As a former corporate trainer, I very much appreciate professional development and training and development opportunities for our staff. And what I am going to ask you about is the Career Tree that you introduced. Just tell me a little bit more. I see that two hundred and twenty-six attended. Is that high school level or middle level or combination of both? At what level? And then my second part, part two of that question is, now that these folks are trained, at what point is this introduced to the students? And then is it introduced to every single student in our district?
So Eric Williams probably can support that response at a deeper level, but I think I know enough to get started for you.
Okay.
So all career and technology education teachers, whether middle-level, high school, or career center, have been oriented and trained in Career Tree, okay? Career Tree, I'll be direct to responding to your questions. When Mark Perna is here with us in February, he will be rolling out this, and you are a sweet man. He will be rolling out this philosophy and the processes to all principals, because we're looking to scale, all principals, counselors, and assistant principals, okay? So depending on our venue, we will go as deep into those, all principals, but as deep into counselor and assistant principal as numbers will allow, okay? With the intent that, going forward, this Career Tree philosophy and coaching of students and opportunity to explore will be truly rolled out district-wide, all the way down, even at the elementary level. So Eric, you want to give them a little deeper overview of how a Career Tree works and how that's developed?
Yeah, and it's essentially just a framework. So as you can see on the screen, we have the marketing pathway. We have lots of different marketing courses at our schools, but essentially, we could say to a student, you know, if you would like to move into an entry-level career in marketing, these are the entry-level careers that you could go straight from high school into this particular career field. And so those are listed there. If you want to get a little further training, you know, you could go to Greenville Tech, get an associate's degree in marketing or management. These are the careers that might be available to you. Once we flesh this out a little bit more, we'll also add some salary information across the bottom so students can see. And the idea we want to get them to think about is that it is a... it isn't necessarily a linear, uh, correlation between how much, uh, education and training you have to the amount of money that you might be able to make in one of these pathways. The example that Perna always uses is the, uh, there's a, a Career Tree for electricity. We don't have strong electricity programs here. That's one of the things we're thinking about. But, um, he has on the professional, uh, careers, uh, an electrical engineer. But then on the technical career side, uh, he has a journeyman electrician. And so he always says, you know, a journeyman electrician typically makes, on national average, about twice as much as an electrical engineer would make. And so there are opportunities for you to go through this pathway. Um, but I don't necessarily love it that the professional career is on the top of the tree, okay? But that's just showing it takes you that much more training to get there. But there are opportunities for students, uh, to participate in either a, um, one of the entry-level careers or one of the technical careers, uh, by earning that associate's degree, or just by going straight into the workforce. And they have that opportunity. So we talked to our students about there being multiple on-ramps and off-ramps. Um, so it might be a life stage, right? They might need to go right into the workforce after school. And then there's an opportunity to come back and go to Greenville Tech or to participate, uh, into a four-year program. And so just to give them a visual aid, uh, we shared with them at the training at the beginning, um, you know, the, the opportunities for you to put this up at the beginning, uh, of your class and to say, where would you like to be on the tree? And day one is right now. Day one is here in one of our CTE classes. You've taken the first step to be on this pathway, to be in this tree system. So then he gave, shared an example of one teacher who took, uh, you know, where, where the students said that they wanted to be, wrote that out on a leaf and put their name at individual places on the tree. And then as he was going through the course of the year, the teacher would go back to those and say, okay, what steps are you taking to get to this particular place? That bottom foundation is the core academic content. So we always want to try to tie our CTE programming back to our core academic, academic content. So we can say in a CTE classroom for mechatronics, uh, this is fantastic that you're taking these steps. If you don't have a strong foundation in math, you're not going to be able to get where you want to be on the tree. So really a very simple concept, but it's a great framework that we'd like to introduce K through 12 for our students to be able to see how they can move up that tree and where they could, and so that they can end up where they want to be.
This ties back to the push to renew our focus on graduating students who are college and career-ready. I think, uh, Ms. Cap mentioned that. We work with principals on that. Got time, as Eric mentioned, scheduled later in the year for, uh, Mark Perna to come in and work directly with them. One of the things I don't think he mentioned is, is kind of a powerful message in all of his work that's supported by research and data. He didn't talk about 127, did you talk about that?
Yes.
Um, basically for skilled jobs. If you look at skilled jobs, there is for every 10 jobs that are skilled. There's a job for somebody with a postgraduate degree. There are about two or slightly over two for someone with a four-year degree. And there are about seven for persons with an associate degree or training beyond high school. And that's an important realization for our counselors to have, for our principals to have, our teachers to have, and parents to have, that there are all these opportunities that, that, you know, just because the top of the tree shows this, that doesn't mean that's where your first opportunity ought to be. Or maybe even your, that may not be where you ever wish to go or need to go or desire to go. Uh, so it helps to give a perspective of what the opportunities are, the things that you have to do. And then as Mr. Williams, uh, related to you, shows you how you can get on and off of these things. You, you might choose to go for one-year, uh, training after high school, but then you may ultimately go get a, a master's degree in that area. Or you might ultimately get a two-year degree. Or you may stay what, kind of where you are.
So is this going to be a tool that, I, I think beginning in eighth grade is when we do IGP meetings, is that correct?
Correct.
Is this going to be a tool that our counselors will then use each year? Because we also know children, students change their minds. So they might think, I'm going to go in this direction. And then they decide instead of a mathematical direction, they might be going on a healthcare direction. So I'm, I'm just curious if that's what the ultimate goal is.
Yes. And so we have plans to, uh, link this into school links, but then to also make the tree interactive, uh, be a kind of step two, phase two of the project where you could click on one of these careers and you could see, okay, what schools, what high schools is it available at? Now, what courses do I need to take that are offered at my high school to help the counselors with that planning, to help the students with that planning, but also to help our parents with that planning?
Okay. I guess that was going to be my next question because not all schools offer the same.
Right.
Path. And so since we, as a district, um, have such great school choice, having some of that, having the parents engaged in that process might also help them make choices or steer their children in a certain direction, even in a school.
Correct.
Choice setting. Okay. All right. I like this. Do we have like a estimated, and I hear that he's coming in February. So do we have like a estimated time when this might be more broadly used or I guess officially implemented?
Sure. So the, in the training, uh, we had sort of a general session and then the, the teachers broke out by cluster area. So it was a great opportunity for them to collaborate across the district, broke out by cluster area and worked on creating their trees. Uh, we have about, um, I believe it's 12 of the 18 trees completed. We'll get to 18 very soon. The idea then would be when he comes in February, we're still before the course registration process. Uh, and so that we would roll this out officially immediately following that to our counselors, and they would have it as a tool. Again, a full implementation would probably be next year.
Next year. Okay. Thank you so much.
Firstly, we have one more speaker, so without objection, we have two more speakers. So without objection, we'll extend for 10 more minutes. Ms. Bush.
First thing that I want to do is say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you to not just the people in this room, but to all the people that participated in this, in these trainings, um, that. And when I look back at this, and I think that all this was accomplished right when we were in the middle of a pandemic. And, 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 and all, and the people not only doing all this training, but the people that participating in this training have other jobs that they were doing miraculously somehow. Um, and so it, it helps to, um, it is so frustrating when I hear someone, just in the general public, make a comment of, well, I want to work for the school system because you get the summer off. And that's their big attraction. And it is a myth that, um, you know, if, if you just look at this report and see of all the people doing training, all the people participating, um, it, it is just incredible. And, and through my more than two decades on this board, I, I have seen this just evolve and grow and grow and grow every year. And so it's wonderful just to see that, that this, um, the district's commitment to professional development, along with our employees, whether they be bus drivers or hourly people or, or, um, teachers and administrators, their hunger to continue to be able to be the best and to grow in their education, um, it is, is so encouraging. And so, you know, I just want to thank all the people, all the people that did the training, all the people that participated in the training. And, and I can't imagine, we spent all that time this morning looking at recruiting, um, employees. And this is one of the most phenomenal recruitment tools that I could imagine. So my question, um, is how do we compare with other? I, I can't imagine another district in this state that offers this overwhelming from, from food services to bus, to, to, to teachers, to administrators, um, leadership. I mean, this, this broad amount of training that we, that we have as an opportunity that sometimes when you, when, when people are made aware of that ability that they have and the support that, that this district commits to every position throughout the district, that, you know, $5,000 on a job might, I would say that the support that I knew a district committed to me has a huge impact on whether it's just a number on my paycheck or not. And my ability coming into a profession as a young student, knowing that I wanted this to be my career and I wanted to commit to a district that, that, that shows a history of continuous support, not political wins that changed and said, well, we'll support you for this, for this election term, but now we're, we're going to take all of our resources. And this district has consistently supported. So do we know or do we have that information? Or could we, um, would that be too hard to gather? Would be how we stand in the state and in this, in the region and in the nation to other, um, to other, um, districts and what they offer in their support, um, you know, throughout their district?
I, I don't know of any readily available source for that. I don't, there's, there's probably nobody in the state. And this didn't even have anything to do with the number of employees, but the diversity of trainings. I don't know if there's anybody in our state that undertakes this sort of diversity of training. Uh, some of the other consortium districts, that is, those large countywide districts, they do some things that are, would be somewhat comparable to this. Uh, we, we've done a lot of benchmarking over the years with Gwinnett. Uh, they do a lot of training across areas. But again, that, those consortium districts, you have to be invited to be a part of that. So it tends to be, uh, better, better school districts, uh, which is who we want to benchmark with. Uh, there, obviously there are other districts in our state that do training for, uh, for teachers. That's probably relatively common among the bigger districts in the state. Uh, some of them do some training for other employees. Probably most of them do bus driver training. There would be a few that would do some sort of custodial training. But some of this is we're able to leverage our size. It doesn't mean they wouldn't be interested in doing this or, or perhaps try to do it, but they might not have the capacity, uh, to do it. Fortunately, we've been able to devote resources to that. Uh, you all approved, excuse me, a few years ago, actually, the, the position that Ms. Cap's in to coordinate staff and leadership development. Prior to that, it'd probably been eight or 10 years before there was a, since there had been a separate position to coordinate all this. It was done as a part of somebody else's job. Well, it, this is too important to be a part of somebody else's job. We need to have a devoted, dedicated resource to developing that. Uh, and although that's a lot for a person with one support person to do, all these people, to your point, Ms. Bush, that do the teaching and the putting together, you know, if it's the academy for our teachers, Mr. McCoy and his staff has a lot invested in the design of that. What we would do at, at, um, maintenance and building services heavily involves the operational staff out there in determining what to teach, how to teach it, who does the teaching, and that sort of thing. Transportation's the same way, and food service. Uh, we, it just requires an awful lot of time, as you noted, and I appreciate you noting that, on the part of our employees to develop these opportunities for other employees, to make them better at what they do. And it also, you know, we don't have a huge opportunity for advancement just because we don't have that many management and leadership positions. But the ones we do have, this better positions a person who wishes to advance themselves to be prepared, to take advantage of those opportunities and to get more consideration. I mean, you're going to get more consideration if you've got on your resume or you're able to articulate, well, I've been to these trainings and I learned these things from it, as opposed to an employee who just comes and does their job, which we certainly expect that and want people to do that. But it shows you're willing to put forth the initiative to take advantage of these opportunities, to prepare yourself. Perhaps you're a custodian that wants to become a head custodian, or you want to become a plan engineer ultimately. Then we have people that are plan engineers that ultimately move over and on to the skilled trade side at maintenance or become a supervisor there. So while there might not be that many of those positions, there is opportunity for advancement and it can improve your chances. You know, sometimes we, sometimes we lose these people to, to go somewhere else to advance, and that's okay too, because we're helping that individual and ultimately improving the quality of services available to our students and to our employees.
Thank you. Again, thank you. And it is great job insurance for you to see, to see how that investment has been. I mean, that, you know, no doubt, no one can argue that the investment in that position has, um, you know, has been very rewarding for many, many people throughout our district on, on all different levels. And I'm glad that the superintendent and the board committed to, to, to that a few years ago. And, um, I think we're continuously headed in the right direction. And again, a big thank you. And I hope that we use this definitely as a recruiting tool when we're, um, when, no, no matter at what level we're recruiting, that, that this district, um, believes in professional development for all of its employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. And, and I'll extend a remark in regards to recruiting. Um, teachers, in, in my experience, uh, the further along we get, um, are far more prone to come into an interview now and say, what are you going to do to make sure I'm successful in my first years? And how are you going to help me grow? And so those have become very much, um, they teach them in college if they don't just grow up with it. But, um, they're very much what they're looking for. And so we do use the robust development available in our county as a recruiting tool. So I appreciate that you recognize that, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Ms. Levin, as well.
You weren't supposed to notice that far.
It could be simplified all the way down to elementary school.
Let me put it here. You put it there so it would hide from me, and it does. Um, so I think it would be a, a great opportunity to use this as a tool for the younger so that they can see the direction that they could possibly go in, that they're not locked in, they can go others. I know, you know, you pick a career when you're in middle school and all that stuff. But these kids are smarter now. They like to, they like this, and this is very appetizing. I, I, I don't know how you came up with that, but I love it. And it also builds that gateway to career centers and onto college. So the way we're headed with education, I'm hearing more and more parents go, you know, my kid went to college and they're not even working. You know, that was a waste of money. Well, now this can happen. They can get an associate plus in school, in high school. So I, I, I really like what you did. I'm glad you out of breath because you really talked it through it pretty quickly. And, um, I just want to make sure that, I was just wanting to make sure that I didn't miss the age level that you were bringing this to.
Yeah. We would eventually, sort of in that phase too, we would bring it to the elementary schools, really simply just as exposure. These are the, these are the available career pathways that we have in Greenville County.
And I think that would, I would also use it as a tool to give out to parents so they can see that, um, you know, you're a visionary and their children can be visionaries to see what directions they want to go and opportunities that are available. That's all I have. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levin, as well. So I think we have one more speaker. So without objection, we'll extend for five more minutes. Mr. Sennett.
Dr. Royster, do we have a cost breakdown for these 21 programs?
About all the, uh, trainings that were done?
Right. Do we have a budget for any of these?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, some of it comes from staff development budget. We'd have to get that. Tell you, most of what does, most of what's done here is done by our people on their work time. They're, they're teaching these classes, they're providing this instruction. Uh, and we don't try to separate out that they spent, you know, took 12 days this summer teaching something. We do have some external costs. That's probably more related to the summer academy, uh, for teachers. We can send you that, but there's. summer academy for teachers. We can send you that, but there's pretty minimal cost involved in this.
I'm not interested in what we pay our teachers. I'm talking about any outside resources.
It's pretty minimal. We'd be glad to send that to you.
There's very few of them.
If you can just let me know what.
Yes, sir. We'll send that to all the board members.
And Ms. Kell, I was interested in the principal induction program. Can you give me some kind of a consensus or content on what they have about difficult conversations?
So it is not necessarily a natural act for someone to be able to sit down and across from someone who is maybe not achieving as they should, maybe not investing in the classroom as they should, or may in fact have 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 done something in violation of policy or expectation. And so we go through role plays, along with some scaffolds and some STEMS, to support people to have those conversations in a productive way, so that they get from the context of the concern to the expectation of the employee and to the agreements of what next steps are. And so some people come by that naturally, some people do not, but it is a professional obligation that anyone in a leadership role, and even in a mentor role, understands how to sit down and say difficult things to folks that they might otherwise be a colleague to or work alongside any day.
I'm just wondering what we would consider.
A difficult.
To be a difficult conversation. Do we have an outline of that, or do we have examples of that? How we go about teaching that? And I assume this is what principals are given training in.
They are.
And I would just be interested to see what we consider or what we construe to be a difficult conversation.
So they're called many things. Sometimes it's called a crucial conversation. Sometimes, I mean, you can call it a lot of different things. But the point, we do have a model that Human Resources trains every administrator to use. And there's a worksheet that they have, and it's called React. And I can't tell you what all the letters mean in this moment. But basically, they sit down and they talk about the context of the concern they need to discuss. They talk about expectations surrounding that concern. They talk about the actions taken that are in contrast to that. They talk about what they expect to have change. That employee talks about certainly their perspective on what happened and why they made the decisions they did. And they close that with some agreements and next steps and further clarity around what's to happen going forward. So it's there is a structure. There's there's a loose, what we call a mind frame, or a mental model around how you have those discussions. But we also have some supports that are systematic to be able to do that.
That doesn't tell me what we consider to be a difficult conversation. So if there's some kind of a handout or something we do with that, I'd be interested in.
In terms of what those are?
Right.
Ms. Suddeth, we can send the board an example of what one of those would be, but you could imagine that you had some sort of issue or complaint, or something you'd noticed in a in an employee's performance or behavior, and how you go about having that conversation with that employee, how you first would get them to to see the issue in their own behavior. And if they didn't see it, how you would coach them to the point where they did see it. And ultimately, if they don't see it on their own, how you then say to him, well, this is this is what you need to be looking at. We can send you an example of that, because I sense what you're asking for is some concrete, here's a problem we use, and here's the here's how they're walked through. Is that correct?
I'm interested in whether we're talking about conversations with students, teachers, or with parents.
Be all of those.
Five sources.
It would be all of those, and the situations would change from time to time. Obviously, we don't use the same situations over and over again, because they do talk to one another.
Give me that. I appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suddeth. I believe that's all the questions from board members, which will conclude this item on the agenda. All right, friends, we are about an hour and a half behind schedule, and I'm hungry. So we're going to take a 20-minute break to grab lunch, and we will reconvene at 12:15.
We've gone from the years that I've been in this history, you know, what was a difficult conversation.
Thanks, everybody. We're going to call this meeting back to order. We are on item 3.03, the South Carolina School Board Association Delegates. Mr. Meek has a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Once again this year, we get to go as delegates down to Charleston to the South Carolina School Board Association Annual Meeting to be held on Saturday, December the 4th. This year, we get 25 votes. And as normal, we put each member as a delegate and an alternate. That way, no matter how many we have there, we can divide the votes up. All board members get two votes, chair gets three votes because there's an odd number. They always give the chair that extra number. So Tammy would like for us to, if we could, let her know if we're going by the end of this week because I think the rooms opened up on the 18th. So if you're going to be staying at the Marriott, then you need to let her know so she can get your room. Ms. Wells wants to speak, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Ms. Wells?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry. Is the motion on?
There is not. Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, why?
To certify the slate of delegates. Each trustee named as both delegate and alternate?
Yes.
With the chair assigned to the three votes and the remaining trustees two each?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from this Goodwin call off? Your mic's muted. But we have record that you made that motion.
Yes, thank you. So just kind of because we have new folks that are going and because some conversation that's happened at the state level, just wanted to kind of say, so, you know, this process is we go into the delegate assembly and we have a body of information that we are going to vote to support. And then we do that as a body. So what's, one of the things that they've run into in the last, we've run into in the last few years is sometimes someone will go to the delegate assembly and they haven't reviewed the material before they get there. They review the material when they get there and they have some concern about it or want to do something different, but they haven't gotten approval from their local board to do so. So I think it's really important that we all kind of understand that we need to look at that material prior to going to the conference. And if we want to collectively take some action or make some modification, we need to decide that as, or we should have that conversation, decide that as a board before we go down there and each individual person has their two or three votes and might want to vote differently on different, different things. So, you know, it's just a process, but for the new board members in particular, you know, if you guys want to hear a little bit more about the details of that process and what we're going to be reviewing, I would be happy to step you through that or any of the other board members that have been around for a while and part of that. So just a clarification there on kind of what happens.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. The advocacy committee typically reviews those in the fall and we don't have a meeting in October because of the earlier meeting that's scheduled. So I'll, I'll make sure we get an advocacy meeting scheduled for November and maybe if you could come and speak to the items that are on the, on the slate.
Mr. Lewis, also doesn't the board or the, or the executive director have to be notified before then? At least I haven't been there for a couple of years, but it seems like that, that they have to be notified ahead if we're going to try to ask or try to change what, what's on the agenda.
Yeah, but there's some, there's been some opportunity to pull items and then to try to wordsmith things or there've been conversations where like a board, two different people from the same board would get up and argue opposite points about want to approve or why not to approve something. So that's where I'm saying just we should all, you know, do our kind of due diligence and review the material, have a conversation about the material so that we are all on the same page when we go down there and vote for or against, you know, the resolutions that will have before us.
And if we only have, Mr. Chairman, if we only have five there, then the five votes are divided up into the 25 votes that we have. So I really don't know how many is going to be a delegate or an alternative until people show up.
Are there any other questions or comments about this action? Hearing none, the recommended motion is to certify the slate of delegates with each trustee named as both a delegate and an alternate, with the chair assigned the three remaining votes and the remaining trustees two votes each. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Meek, for your work on this. Next item is 3.04, Revision of Board Policy GBO, Resignation and Release of Contract. Dr. Royster?
No, I want to crystal need dollars, man. I keep the, Mr. Lewis, you have before you a recommended change to that policy. Mr. Webb can speak to the details if you need him to, but in summary, what we're recommending is that we move the release date from contractual obligations for employees with a contract from July 1 to June 1. That makes it one more in line with what other districts are doing. It's still a little bit of a later date than a lot of districts have for us to just release someone from their contract without any reason. Now, we would still, even, even today, if we had an employee that had circumstances beyond their control, we would release them from their contract without penalty. This moves the routine date from July 1 to June 1. It also helps to align that date with the last date for teachers to receive a transfer within the district, which I believe is the following week, am I right, Ms. Gibbs? So it gives an extra week there for people to have told us and another opportunity for people who've asked for a transfer to be considered. This better positions us to be looking for teachers at a time when candidates are more numerous. We, we may need to, in fact, come back to you sometime in the future and look to move that back a little bit more, but we would like at this time to recommend that change to, to June 1. And I believe there's also a slight change in making it clear that we, principals or department heads can accept resignations of non-certified personnel in addition to certified personnel. I believe anything out.
No, Dr. Royster, you covered. I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Dr. Royster, Mr. Meek.
Dr. Royster, why don't we move it back to May 1st now instead of waiting? What's, what's the, why don't you?
I believe the, I believe the statutory date's now May the, well, 10th.
May 10th. So, Mr. Meek, we, we did pull several school districts within South Carolina and we were one of the later ones being July 1st. I would say the majority are June 1st. There are a few with the May 10th. As Dr. Royster's mentioned, you know, it might be prudent in the future, depending on how things work out, to possibly move it, move it up even more beyond that, but I think June 1st is a reasonable next step from July 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, I'll recommend motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy GBO.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. We have a motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy GBO and a second from Ms. Lavington Wells. Did you, Mr. Meek, did you have any other questions or comments? Are there any other questions or comments about this proposed revision?
Thanks, everybody. We're going to call this meeting back to order. We are on item 3.03, the South Carolina School Board Association Delegates. Mr. Meek has a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Once again this year, we get to go as delegates down to Charleston to the South Carolina School Board Association Annual Meeting to be held on Saturday, December the 4th. This year, we get 25 votes. And as normal, we put each member as a delegate and an alternate. That way, no matter how many we have there, we can divide the votes up. All board members get two votes, Chair gets three votes because there's an odd number, and they always give the Chair that extra number. So Tammy would like for us to, if we could, let her know if we're going by the end of this week because I think the rooms open up only 18th. So if you're going to be staying at the Marriott, then you need to let her know so she can get your room. Ms. Wells wants to speak, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Ms. Wells?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry. Is the motion on the floor already?
There is not. Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, why?
To certify the slate of delegates?
Yes.
Each trustee named as both delegate and alternate?
Yes.
With the Chair assigned to the three votes and the remaining trustees two each?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from this Goodwin call off? Your mic's muted. But we have record that you made that motion.
Yes, thank you. So just kind of because we have new folks that are going in because some conversation that's happened at the state level, just wanted to kind of say, so, you know, this process is we go into the delegate assembly and we have a body of information that we are going to vote to support. And then we do that as a body. So what's, one of the things that they've run into in the last, we've run into in the last few years is sometimes someone will go to the delegate assembly and they haven't reviewed the material before they get there. They review the material when they get there and they have some concern about it or want to do something different, but they haven't gotten approval from their local board to do so. So I think it's really important that we all kind of understand that we need to look at that material prior to going to the conference. And if we want to collectively take some action or make some modification, we need to decide that as, or we should have that conversation, decide that as a board before we go down there and each individual person has their two or three votes and might want to vote differently on different, different things. So, you know, it's just a process, but for the new board members in particular, you know, if you guys want to hear a little bit more about the details of that process and what we're going to be reviewing, I would be happy to step you through that or any of the other board members that have been around for a while and part of that. So just a clarification there on kind of what happens.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. The Advocacy Committee typically reviews those in the fall, and we don't have a meeting in October because of the earlier meeting that's scheduled. So I'll make sure we get an Advocacy Committee scheduled for November and maybe if you could come and speak to the items that are on the, on the slate.
Mr. Lewis, also doesn't the board or the, or the Executive Director have to be notified before then? At least I have been there for a couple of years, but it seems like that, that they have to be notified ahead if we're going to try to ask or try to change what's on the agenda.
Yeah, but there's some, there's been some opportunity to pull items and then to try to wordsmith things or there've been conversations where like a board, two different people from the same board would get up and argue opposite points about want to approve or why not to approve something. So that's where I'm saying just we should all, you know, do our kind of due diligence and review the material, have a conversation about the material so that we are all on the same page when we go down there and vote for or against, you know, the resolutions that will have before us.
And if we only have, Mr. Chairman, if we only have five there, then the five votes are divided up into the 25 votes that we have. So I really don't know how many is going to be a delegate or an alternative until people show up. Okay?
Are there any other questions or comments about this action? Hearing none, the recommended motion is to certify the slate of delegates with each trustee named as both a delegate and an alternate, with the Chair assigned the three remaining votes and the remaining trustees two votes each. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Meek, for your work on this. Next item is 3.04, Revision of Board Policy GBO, Resignation and Release of Contract. Dr. Royster.
No, I want to crystal need dollars, man. I keep the, Mr. Lewis, you have before you a recommended change to that policy. Mr. Webb can speak to the details if you need him to, but in summary, what we're recommending is that we move the release date from contractual obligations for employees with a contract from July 1 to June 1. That makes it one more in line with what other districts are doing. It's still a little bit of a later date than a lot of districts have for us to just release someone from their contract without any reason. Now, we would still, even, even today, if we had an employee that had circumstances beyond their control, we would release them from their contract without penalty. This moves the routine date from July 1 to June 1. It also helps to align that date with the last date for teachers to receive a transfer within the district, which I believe is the following week. Am I right, Ms. Gibbs? So it gives an extra week there for people to have told us and another opportunity for people who've asked for a transfer to be considered. This better positions us to be looking for teachers at a time when candidates are more numerous. We may need to, in fact, come back to you sometime in the future and look to move that back a little bit more, but we would like at this time to recommend that change to, to June 1. And I believe there's also a slight change in making it clear that we, principals or department heads can accept resignations of non-certified personnel in addition to certified personnel. I believe anything out.
No, Dr. Royster, you covered. I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Dr. Royster, Mr. Meek.
Dr. Royster, why don't we move it back to May 1st now instead of waiting? What's, what's the, why don't you?
I believe the, I believe the statutory date's now May the, well, 10th.
May 10th. So, Mr. Meek, we, we did pool several school districts within South Carolina, and we were one of the later ones being July 1st. I would say the majority are June 1st. There are a few with the May 10th. As Dr. Royster's mentioned, you know, it might be prudent in the future, depending on how things work out, to possibly move it, move it up even more beyond that. But I think June 1st is a reasonable next step from July 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy GBO.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. We have a motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy GBO and a second from Ms. Laventis Wells. Did you, Mr. Meek, did you have any other questions? Are there any other questions or comments about this proposed revision? Ms. Wells?
Dr. Royster, so Ms. Gibbs mentioned that we had, we have a lot of people now resigning kind of mid, mid-year, not wanting to return. Do, do we see that as being something, I guess, does this, does what we have in this policy allow enough latitude for you to, to allow for those exceptions without holding someone in breach of contract? And then, you know, because if they end up, if they're not eligible for reemployment because they, you know, don't get proper release from their contract, and then we can't hire them back, that might be problematic given kind of where we are and where we think we're headed with some of this. So you feel like you have enough latitude? Is there anything else we need to change in the policy to be sure you have that latitude?
No, because it's pretty broadly worded. It really gives us latitude where it is an issue beyond the employee's control. That could be, I think Ms. Gibbs gave you an example earlier of some people with some maybe medical or family issues that don't necessarily qualify for short-term or long-term disability. It is also fairly frequent, there's some sort of issue in the family, they have to take time to take care of an elderly parent maybe or sick child. We get, it's called the nature of green, but we get a lot of transfer, employee spouse transfers somewhere else. We end up having a fair number of those. On occasion, we'll have some military deployments for a spouse's deployment because you can take leave if you're on our payroll and military deployed. So there, there are plenty of, there's plenty of ability there to recognize things other than, hey, I'm just, I'm just quitting because I want to go do something else. That's really not a, that's really not a good reason to leave students without a teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Royster, I have just one. The, the change in policy, it struck out a couple of items as reasons, sickness, change of spouses, residence out of district, maternity. Is that, is that because we're just including those in the other exceptional circumstances or the, or we are now removing those as legitimate reasons?
I would, I would include those in circumstances beyond an employee's control.
Okay, so if an employee's spouse moves out of district, we would consider that beyond their?
And I think health reasons would cover maternity.
Maternity, and typically under the law and policies, we need to move away from maternity and do other health reasons.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the revisions to Board Policy GBO. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
The next item on the agenda is item 3.05, the Appeal of Material Review Committee Decision. Dr. Royster.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Dr. McDavid is going to speak to this. She is the academics employee that's charged with facilitating this process, and she will give you an overview of the process and a report of the results of the review committee as exist in their furtherance and carrying out of their responsibilities under your policy. Dr. McDavid.
Good afternoon, members of the boards. On May 22nd, 2021, we received four requests for reconsideration of instructional materials. These included the book Dark Money, the new book, Nickel and Dime, and all of these. This request is in the form of a student who has been given a sign in an eighteen language composition class, which focuses on the development and revision.
Development and revision, thank you, of evidence-based analytic and argumentative writing and the rhetorical analysis of nonfiction texts. In order to complete this assignment, he was asked to select a book, one book from a list of 25. The parent contacted the teacher in January to report his objection to the book group to which his child was assigned after he failed to select a book on his own. In accordance with Board Policy KNBA, which states, "A student who objects to or finds offensive any instructional materials should be given alternatives." The teacher replied to the parent in rotting stating, "If you prefer, for the student, to read a different book, he is welcome to choose another from the list. Also, if you have any books that you think I should place on my list of book choices, I would be happy to explore your suggestions." The student did not make another selection and no alternate was submitted to the teacher for reconsideration. Of the 25 books on the choice list, the parent submitted four requests for reconsideration of instructional materials. On June 1st, 2021, members of the committee, which was established under Board Policy KNBA, received a letter explaining the process and the timeline for the review. Enclosed along with the letter were copies of Board Policy KNBA and IFA, copies of the four requests for reconsideration of instructional materials from the parent, a copy of the first book for review, and Zoom links to attend each of three committee review sessions in July, August, and September. The remaining books were purchased and mailed separately in July. Committee members were asked to read each book in its entirety prior to the committee meeting scheduled for the review of that book. A little about the committee. Again, the committee was comprised of the required representatives under Board Policy KNBA. All members received copies of all four books. Each member was invited to provide input in rotting if unavailable to participate in our scheduled Zoom session. I facilitated the committee and did not participate in their deliberation. My individual opinion is not represented here. I am reporting the results of the committee. Please refer to your copies of the requests for reconsideration as the parent states in each case, he did not read or study the entire book and that his requests for reconsideration are based on random paragraphs. It is important to note that the committee reviewed each text in its entirety based on the criteria set in Board Policy KNBA, not based on individual sentences or phrases out of context. I will now share with you brief summaries of each of the four texts. The first is Nickled and Dime on Not Getting By in America. The author, Barbara Ehrenreich, who writes from her perspective as an undercover journalist from spring of 1998 to summer of 2000, investigated the impact of welfare reform, the 1996 Welfare Reform Act on the working poor in America. This book was published in 2001 and is her first-person account as she went undercover as a low-wage worker to find out how non-skill workers made ends meet. Her experiment took place in Florida, Maine, and Minnesota, with the author finding a job and lodging in each location. She worked as a waitress, as a maid, as a dietary aide, and as a soft-linced worker at Walmart. She lived for up to one month in each location, working full-time and only living off the amount of money she earned in her low-wage jobs. The goal, her goal, was to determine whether or not she could both live off the money she earned and have enough money at the end of the month to pay the next month's rent. The second book, entitled Talking to Strangers, was written by author Malcolm Gladwell, who's been a staff writer since 1996 and is a bestselling author of social science books, including Blink and The Tipping Point. Published in 2019, Talking to Strangers reports studies of miscommunications, interactions, and assumptions people make when dealing with those they do not know. It further explores how those assumptions influence the actions of individuals. To support his argument, Gladwell covers a variety of events and issues, including the arrest and subsequent death of Sandra Bland, British Prime Minister Neville Chamberlain's interactions with Adolf Hitler, the scandal of Larry Nassar, the Cuban mole Anna Montez, the investment scandal of Bernie Madoff, the Jerry Sandusky scandal, the trial of Cuban spy Amanda Knox, the Brock Turner case, Sylvia Plath's death, and the Kansas City Preventative Patrol Experiment. The third book, The New Jim Crow Mass Incarceration in the Age of Colorblindness, is written by author Michelle Alexander. Alexander is a civil rights litigator, a legal scholar, and professor. Published in 2010, The New Jim Crow discusses race relations specific to African-American males and mass incarceration in the United States. Alexander also asserts that discrimination faced by African-American males is prevalent among other minorities and socio-economically disadvantaged populations. Alexander's central premise, which she states, is derived in the title that mass incarceration is metaphorically the new Jim Crow. The fourth book, Dark Money, The Hidden History of Billionaires Behind the Rise of the Radical Right. Author Jane Meyer is an investigative journalist who has been a staff writer since 1995. Published in 2016, Dark Money is about a network of extremely wealthy conservative Republicans. The book focuses on Charles and David Koch, who together funded organizations that worked to influence politics, the courts, state houses, Congress, and the American presidency. Meyer particularly discusses the Koch family and their political activities, along with Richard Melenskae, John M. Olin, the Bradley Brothers, the DeVos and Coors families, and their related foundations. In accordance with the requirements of Board Policy KNBA, each book was reviewed separately in light of age of the students, purpose of the materials, any mandatory, any mandatory use of the materials, their educational value, and the basis of the complaint. With regard to the age of the students choosing them, the committee found that the content is appropriate for introductory college-level content intended for early college students and in our district, 11th and 12th graders. With regard to the purpose of the materials, the committee found that the purpose was to analyze rhetoric and argumentative rotting. Based on what was presented at the college board overview, the AP Language and Composition course focuses on the development and revision of evidence-based analytic and argumentative rotting and the rhetorical analysis of nonfiction texts. That is based on the most recent overview in 2021. With regard to any mandatory use of the materials, other options were available for the student. Students were able to select books from the list, and the teacher made an option available for the student to submit additional alternatives for completion of the assignment. With regard to their educational value, the committee found that in order to develop evidence-based argumentative writing, the students must analyze persuasive nonfiction texts. Therefore, the purpose of the text is deemed valid and provided educational value for the purpose of the course, AP Language and Composition. With regard to the basis of the complaint, upon reading each text, the committee found that the objections presented in the four requests for reconsideration were taken out of context and separated from the primary themes in each of the four books. The requests for reconsideration in Nickled and Dime, Barbara Ehrenreich's book, references Board Policy IFA and Rule IFA. As a reminder, Rule IFA in Bullet 1 states about religion, factual, unbiased materials on all major religions should be available for student use. Religion, both in general and by specific sex, sex should be neither promoted nor inhibited. It also states in IFA, Rule IFA's Bullet 3, sex, profane, and obscene material. It states that professional personnel should subject materials of this type to a stern test of literary merit and reality. The district would not in any case endorse obscenity, salacious profanity, or graphic sexual incidents. The mere appearance of sexual or expressive language in recognized materials, however, should not automatically disqualify them. Rather, the decision should be based on whether the materials present life in true proportions, whether circumstances are realistically dealt with, and whether literary values are present. At all times, consideration must be given to the maturity level of the student. The committee determined that the author of Nickled and Dimed, Barbara Ehrenreich, did not describe in detail explicit acts which were referenced in the complaint. She alluded to physical posturing while scrubbing floors and made a reference to a person's name. The author shared her personal account of the impact of the 1996 Welfare Reform Act, and she based it on her personal investigation of the working poor. The author gave a brief description of what she experienced in a religious setting and explained that her perception was based on her personal experiences growing up. In the review of Talking to Strangers by Malcolm Gladwell, the committee determined and pointed out that the book begins and ends with the story of Sandra Bland, using transcripts from a recording made during her arrest. Gladwell gave a summary of the deaths of Michael Brown, Freddie Gray, Philando Castile, Eric Garner, and Walter Scott. This was noted as the topic of the April 5, 2015 podcast by Sandra Bland, which was three months before her death. Malcolm Gladwell then goes on to describe miscommunications in multiple popular news reports throughout the majority of the book, which we discussed earlier. The subject of the other cases is not police brutality against African-Americans. Rather, he covered a variety of different news topics. The author of The New Jim Crow, Michelle Alexander, the committee pointed out that the author describes her perspective and intended audience in the preface of the book. She describes how she feels the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of 1984 impacted African-Americans. The committee expressed that this is presented as her argument. And in Dark Money, the committee pointed out that Jane Meyer, the investigative journalist, references in her account exclusive interviews, court proceedings, public records, and private papers as she describes how wealthy families influence politics with money. The committee only took into consideration the specific objections written in each request for reconsideration. With regard to relevant community standards, when reviewing this presentation, it was also noted that the objections in their generic form could apply to many of the classics: violence in Shakespeare's Macbeth, sexual innuendo in Jeffrey Chaucer's Canterbury Tales, or the inequality of race, poverty, and class in Charles Dickens's Oliver Twist, Hard Times, or even A Christmas Carol. Again, it is important to note that the committee reviewed each text in its entirety based on the criteria set forth in Board Policy KNBA, not based on individual sentences or phrases out of context, and weighed them on all the tenants of Board Policy KNBA. Of the available options to the committee, the committee decided by unanimous vote to take no action on removing each of the four books submitted for requests for reconsideration. Thank you.
Dr. McDavid, Dr. Royster, is that? Do you have anything to add?
Yes, and we will send a transcript of Dr. McDavid's comments after the fact to you all.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. So just a few things for the board before we get started with these items. First, this is being presented today for information only because the board will be asked to vote on this at the October 26th Board Meeting. So today, there's not a recommended action item. It's just an opportunity for the board to ask additional questions. To help keep us focused, since there's not a specific action item, it's important to remember that we are specifically focusing on the material review request that this parent submitted and the response from the review committee. The person also provided additional documentation that I think you received by email that talked about some personnel questions, some questions about how books are selected, and those are not on the agenda for today. And so Dr. Royster has said that there will be a future time to discuss those, but that they're not specifically relevant to the request that was submitted today. So we will open the floor for questions, but please remember to keep it focused on specifically this individual's request for reconsideration and the information that was provided by the committee. Are there any questions from board members or comments? Mr. Meek?
Thank you. Just so I understand completely, he did not read any of the books that he's asking to be removed?
The answer is no. According to the question he replied to on his request for consideration, on each, the question is asked about the material. Did you read or study the entire body of material? He responded on Nickel and Dimed, no. And it says, what parts? Random paragraphs. I don't have nearly enough time to read and review every book that is on the current list. I needed to review various portions to get the overall theme. That same response was given on his request for reconsideration of instructional materials in Talking to Strangers, no, random paragraphs. On The New Jim Crow, no, random paragraphs. And on Dark Money, no, random paragraphs.
Answer is no that he did, but he indicates that he read sections or whatever.
He stated that I needed to review various portions to get the overall theme.
How would one know what section to read? Get that opinion, I'm not sure. Is he asking for all four of these books to be removed from Greenville County District or just Malden High School?
He asked for us to reconsider, and when submitting this form, the committee has four options. One is to take no action, which is what they decided. The second is to remove it from instruction at certain levels, and the third would be to remove the book in its entirety. So the committee has a decision to make based on any review. Those are the three options we have.
But did he, the individual that's asking us to review this, did he want it removed from the books out of the whole district or just in Malden High School?
For question number four, which is, you know, for what group would you recommend this material? He says, I would not recommend anyone reading this garbage for The New Jim Crow. He, on Talking to Strangers, for what age group, non-school age for Talking to Strangers? For his request for reconsideration of Nickel and Dime, he says he does not give a response. And for question number four on Dark Money, he does not give a response.
All I have right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Meek, Mr. Suddeth?
Looking at what he has said the books involved, on the Talking to Strangers, he says a false narrative of police brutality against black people. Did that come through as being something that is in that book?
In the book Talking to Strangers?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, there is a paragraph on page five, a paragraph that details the deaths of the young men mentioned earlier, Freddie Gray, Philando Castile, Eric Garner, Walter Scott. That, however, is not the theme of the book.
Tell me what the theme of the book is.
Malcolm Gladwell is a social science writer, and he explains how, when talking to strangers, we don't have the context sometimes, so we make decisions, and there are miscommunications based on what we read into our interactions with other individuals. So he discusses that with other cases that were investigated by police that went beyond that of the ones mentioned in that one page.
I believe that one of the questions was, how Hitler fooled so many prominent leaders?
That question was not on our original request for reconsideration. He added that question to his appeal to you. And yes, that is a question, that's what he explores in the book.
It is in the book.
Yes, how did that happen with regard to communications or miscommunications and assumptions we make while we're communicating with others?
We're talking about the assumptions and the mistakes we make when we deal with people we don't know.
Yes.
But, and so if you were to, the educational value of that book is your opinion. I understand what the book says, and I'm asking for just an opinion. I haven't read the book either, but I have read most of it.
I, and the committee, did not give my opinion, but the committee considered the purpose of the course, which was to examine rhetoric and evidence presented around that. So for this case, students would examine how he built his case for what he was saying and analyze that evidence.
In this Talking to Strangers, he said that the United States is a systematic racist nation, but that's his take on it.
Yes.
That's not big in the book. When he looks at Nickel and Dime?
Yes, sir.
Does that, in that book, does it characterize Jesus Christ as a drunken bum?
In the book, the author goes to a service, at a religious service, and she describes in context her experience, her background, and the, what he spoke of is in the book, yes. And what she was referring to was something different, and how in that church, they only referred to the Christ as he had died and not the living Christ and the actions, but she gave that in a paragraph on page 68, 69, and she, again, referred to that as her experience growing, based on her experiences growing up.
When he was talking about the nickel and the dime, I think what I understood it was that this was an investigation that took place in 1996.
She did the investigation from 98 to, again, let me make sure it has.
So this book is 25 years old?
Yes.
What she's saying on that regard? He was in Florida, in Maine, and Minnesota. Is that the three places that she worked?
Those were the three places she.
For one month, he's one of those.
Yes.
She applies statistics to certain that women were living in poverty compared to their male counterparts, that they were having that the problem with that was that more women are living in poverty compared to their male counterparts.
The author, as an investigative journalist, did include statistics.
I don't want to get into all this and what he said so forth on that. But what he says here, he gives a kind of a summary.
Yes.
And I think he's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight points. Did you see any anal homosexuality in oral sex?
In Nickel and Dimed, there is no graphic depiction of explicit acts. The author works as a maid, and in one of her employers does not allow her to use a mop. So she refers to her position, positional posturing, she does not refer to an act. She also refers to a person who we associate sometimes the name with an act. However, she does not go into any graphic detail in this book about those two explicit things. They're simply references to physical posturing and a reference made to one person's name.
Talking about the war on drugs done with racist intentions. Let me ask you, he says here that The Sun Also Rises, the book discusses fornication, prostitution, drunkenness?
We did not receive a request for reconsideration for The Sun Also Rises by Hemingway. So we did not consider that book.
I was just looking at our policy IFA.
Yes, sir.
And it says that in that, that we're to provide materials that accommodate the varied interests, abilities, and maturity levels of the students served. How do we determine the maturity level of students in these four books?
The maturity level of the students in these four books are those who are taken advanced placement, college introductory level, English, Language and Composition. Those are typically students who are in the 11th and 12th grades. Those students typically would engage in college-level text studies and to be able to defend an argument for this particular course, to defend an argument based on what evidence is presented in the book. They would develop their own counterevidence, and they would be able to write about that.
I just don't quite understand the maturity level of students and how they might look at these four books as being educational.
For the purpose of argument, again, in this book, they would examine the bias or the rhetoric of the individual who wrote the book. And they may have a contrary opinion, but they would use her evidence, they would found counterevidence, and they would do argumentative writing. They can argue with each of the authors in the books.
Okay, so they're taking a position for sake of argument, and hopefully there'll be one that will be on one side and one will be on another side.
Right, but if they read the book, they can present the counterarguments as part of their research. At the end of the course, they should be able to examine the evidence, present it, and make an argument, and be able to defend it based on their own evidence, which may be contrary to what's in a book.
When it says here, provide materials on opposing side of controversial issues, well, in these four books, there is no opposing side, is there?
In the four books, individually, there are not opposing sides.
They're taking one side of an issue.
Yes.
And I'd have to go to another book.
To get a different side.
To find the other side.
Yes, sir.
Respect for human dignity, appreciation of diversity. How do we determine what material, what books have this respect and this appreciation?
When reading the books in their entire context, to understand the differences is to help build the respect for individuals with differing backgrounds. But the individuals in the books can have differing viewpoints, and they may express those.
Talking about here, provide materials that responsive to the religious, the ethnic, and the cultural groups, then, once again, that is in these books, is one side of that argument. I'd have to go to the four other books if I want to decide really a religious or ethnic, even though I'm not sure there is, because he makes mention of Jesus Christ doesn't make it a religious book.
Yes, that is correct.
Oh, but appreciation of the nation's heritage, country's contribution to world progress. My final question, if I've got a book that's filled with gross statements, obscenities, descriptions of human anatomies, is there a place where we, which they know that's not appropriate for our students?
Yes, sir. There is a place for us to say no, that's not appropriate.
And I was wondering how we go about doing that? There's thousands of books, so how in the world, if I go in the library, how do I know which one of those books, you know, are what we as Southerners would say is appropriate for the Christians in the South as opposed to the people that aren't Christians in some other part of the country? That don't make sense on that, do it?
Very difficult.
I'm just trying to, I agree with him. I think this is one side of argument.
Yes.
But that's what our country's based on, is based on opposing viewpoints. That if we're going to just say, no, you can have this one, not that one, then you're right, we're becoming a Marxist socialist country. And so I would not give those four books to my kids, but I would not say no to my students, you can't read those books because they do present an opposing viewpoint. But the country we live in allows that. That's what you call, what you said, well, no, involve the instruction of each book and the view that a person who's taking that book would give that so that they can go out to another presentation. Only way I could have a comparison here is someone say, well, hey, here's a book for the other side. If someone says, hey, there's no book that shows the other side, that would be hard to prove too because I'd have to read every book in your library.
Yes.
That's impossible. I appreciate the time that you took on that. And I've tried to look at this and understand it, and I understand what he's saying, but we still live in a country where we have our rights, and I think that's the right for the people to do that. I kind of questioned when we get to some of the books as to the wording in the book and the brief or the grief or the, I guess, the start reality that they put into the words that they use. I'm not used to that. But anyway, I thank you so much, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Suddeth.
Thank you, Mr. Suddeth, Ms. Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. This is the first appeal or process I've gone through. So if I'm not supposed to, Derek, if I'm not supposed to ask these questions, let me know. I want to go back to the to the committee, just to make sure I'm understanding. So I read, Dr. McDavid, I read your response to this parent, and I'm looking at the, those who make up the committee. So am I to understand it's made up of three parents who just have students enrolled in the district? Meaning, it could be any parent, are those high school-level parents? Since these are high school-level books, or?
Yes, we haven't.
Yes, we have an, we have an elementary committee.
Okay.
A middle and a high school committee.
Okay. And then how are the high school students, the two students that are chosen for this committee? How are they chosen?
We published on the district website and shared a materials review committee members needed. We do this and we published it and they apply.
Okay.
And so we communicate that within our courses that students may apply to be a part of the materials review committee. The students who are selected, applied.
Okay. The two other persons not employed by the district, how are they chosen and what are their backgrounds?
The two other persons.
It says two other persons not employed by the district.
Yes, we have on the committee for the high school, we had three parents, three teachers from which to choose. And when we send the information, one to speed media specialist, one clergy, two community members.
Right.
And so those are not employed by the district.
Right.
They also apply and are selected.
Okay. And neither one of these folks have children in the district or do we know?
They applied as community members and I did not have, they asked, actually get to select which role are you serving? And they applied as community members.
And just to make sure I heard you correctly, every single person that served on this committee read, had the opportunity to read all four books completely from start to finish?
Yes, they had the opportunity to do so.
Okay. I've received a little bit of communication about this in recent months, so I just want to make sure if it would be a fair assumption to make. I've obviously read the, the actual request for reconsideration of instructional materials. Would it be fair to this might go to somebody's question about whether he's at, maybe it was Mr. Meek's question about whether he, this parent is asking these to be removed or if he's asking the list? Because I feel like the communications I've received have been more about while yes, he's concerned about the material that he outlines in the, what we've received here today. It also appears his larger concern is that the, the list isn't a balanced list. Meaning, yes, the teacher allows a student to choose something else if they're not comfortable with the assigned reading, for example. But from the list that they're provided, it's not a balanced list. Meaning a, a list to Mr. Sata's point provides the opposite perspective than the book that they've been asked to read. So are we? I don't know how to ask this question. I'm just, I'm just thinking, is that a fair assumption to make that in the evaluation of this that that's a concern?
Yes, he has presented that as a concern. The committee is charged with reviewing the books individually. And Mr. McCoy may want to address the issue of the list.
Okay. So I would, I would agree, Ms. Mosley, that as we're looking at this, and in this case in particular, and maybe a few others, that we do feel we need to do a little more training with teachers on when they're choosing those lists and revisiting the board policy and the purpose. Even at the AP level courses, that when you're talking about two bound, two opinions, that those need to be balanced. They don't need to be too far left or right, but they need to have two different opinions presented for students. And ideally probably students read both of those so they can art, make an argument to, to one side or the other. So that's something we'll be doing as part of this, relooking at this process with instructional materials. And in training, it's going to take some consequence, try and some subsense, subs, I can't say the word, subsequent, thank you. Subsequent training with teachers to make sure they understand that, how to choose those materials that would present opinion on both sides.
Okay. So I guess that's my last part of that question. And again, I, I know we're not looking for an outcome today, but could a potential outcome be, if what I'm hearing you correctly, a potential outcome could be is that we would review, regardless of what we decide on this particular field, we would review existing list, looking for opportunities to perhaps address the, what I believe to be a very valid concern is the lack of balance and then subsequent training.
Yes. Yes, I think.
Make sure that we're going forward. We are.
Yes, we're looking at some additional processes to put it into school level as well. And to, so that outcome to be that we do have a more fair, balanced list and that we have more than one person necessarily reviewing those as well.
I think that's all the question I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley, Ms. Wells.
This is difficult. There's a lot to kind of dig into. So on the committee, when I read your response, invitations to attend three committee meetings, review meetings, so you had, there were three meetings. And did all the people on this that's listed here as part of the instructional committee, did they all participate?
We invited all to participate. Because we had four books to read in a matter of short time, we spread it out over three months. We did July, August and September. So the communication with the committees included that initial invitation, followed up with their calendar invitations and then an invitation if they were unable to attend to submit their review of the books. The committee did not have 100% attendance at every meeting because of the varying times, July, August and September, that we had to stretch it out in order to read all four books in their entirety.
Did you get, so from the beginning, did you get affirmative willingness to participate from the entire committee in the process?
Yes, thank you. The committee applied to be a part of the committee. So they sent us an application, their contact information saying they wanted to be a part of the committee. We did not solicit invitations or ask people to be on it. It is a public process for inviting people to be a part.
Right, I get that. But for this specific review, these were the people that were on our, these are the instructional committee people, right? So you sent out an email and said, hey, we have this request, I need, this committee needs to do the work. Did you, did this, all of these folks, did they all participate in the process of review? Or were there some group, some group of these that were didn't show up, didn't respond? Like, I, I'm just trying to get a, because this doesn't come up very often. I would imagine you would have someone that might actually say, yes, I want to be on the committee and then they never are on the, there's never anything to do, right? Because this doesn't really come up a lot for us. So I guess my question, I'm trying to understand, because this, what, this memo wasn't clear. Did each one of these people that we've identified, all three parents, three teachers, one media specialist, two high school students, a clergy, community members, did all those people participate and provide feedback to this committee to make this recommendation?
I will need to go back to attend to every attendee of each meeting and align that to show which ones participated in each. But we did have permission, we did have participation from each category.
Had at least one participant.
From each category.
From each category. Okay. And so, and then because you spread it out, did the same group of people review and respond to all four books, book choices? Or like, you know what I'm saying? Like did, or did you have one say, hey, I can't do all of them, but I could do one?
No one said, I can't do all of them, I can do one. It was a commitment of three, I'm sorry, four and three meetings.
So back to the question on the opposing materials, I think our, our policy says, or maybe it's the rule that says that the materials will be approved. You know, it can come through a couple of avenues or by the principal. Right? So, so this teacher's list had been, is there a formal approval process where her list of, here's what I'm going to require? Does, does she submit that to a department chair who then vets it and sends that to the principal to kind of? I guess I'm trying to, what is the process for the, this, this would have been reviewed and vetted through what group of people before it got handed to students and said, here's your choices?
So I think, Ms. Wells, that would be the part that I think that relates to Ms. Mosley's question. I think that's the part that we are putting a little more structure around for going forward, to make sure that does process fully up through the principal and that more, more involvement, I would say, from the department as a whole, from the English departments as a whole.
For years, probably at least 16 or 17, maybe longer. Those decisions were generally exclusively made at the school level and often at the teacher level. Though there were some collaborative efforts among departments within schools and some across schools. What we're looking at is a process where we still retain individual teacher input into the process, because it's important that teachers who know their students best, who know their subject matter best, have a, a strong voice, the primary voice in placing items on reading list. But what we're looking at is a process where that would be coordinated at a departmental level at the, at the school, ultimately reviewed by that school's principal and some overall coordination at the district level. We're not necessarily seeking to do a district level selection process. But then once those lists were made available at a school, those lists would then be, I believe Jeff made available to all schools so that any book on any list might be used by a teacher of that particular class. And obviously different classes have different objectives. If I remember correctly, one of the objectives of this particular class is to examine and pull apart those arguments, whichever side of the issue is presented, whatever book you read or, or chose to read. Because we offer that. And I think one of the things that we found, Jeff particularly had an opportunity to discuss this with superintendents and chief academic officers from throughout the country within the last month. One of the things that we found in our policy is relatively unusual among that group in that it provides students an opportunity to offer their own selection for consideration. So that, that is a very positive aspect to it. But in this case, in this course, the idea is you, you get this, whatever the viewpoint is that's presented and part of your job is to tear it apart. I believe that's a correct understanding, Dr. McDavid.
That is.
So you, you are responsible as the reader and as part of your assignment, you, you look at that, you're supposed to identify fallacies in their argument. I would imagine the teacher of that class would be encouraging you to go out and seek other sources, whether they're on that list or not, to dispel whatever's promoted there. And some of it appears in really what caused us to look at our process. There seemed to be not as wide a selection available in that particular class as one might hope would be there.
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I will I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. I, I believe the teacher knows how best to work with the students in her community or his community to determine what do I need to put on the list that's going to be thought provoking, that they're not going to read? Because the problem with telling the student, well, you can read, you pick a book to read, I'm probably going to go pick something that I want to read and sounds like me, right? So, so I, I do think teachers know their community best and really should know what to put on the list so that they can provoke thought, discussion and debate and not so much for the, to tear it apart, but to invoke your own critical thinking processes. So I guess I'm, I'm I think I did hear the process should or is that the teacher would have had a list that the department at least is published or shared with the department, which then goes to the principal and, and maybe, you know, maybe there's, they haven't looked at it for balance. There's, you know, you have a lot to review and a lot of time, but we have, we have that process of it. Those things are getting vetted all the way through. And similarly, that department, the group of teachers in that department know that community and those students and should be able to throw a red flag if this isn't going to work for our community or if there's going to be a problem. Similarly with the principal. So I guess I'm seeing a lot of places where knowing your community, knowing your students, knowing what they need to push them forward, there are places to, to vet this where I feel like there's a good foundation there for what that looks like.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's where we're just going to, while you said, like, as you accurately said, I think that was the expectation, the process was happening. I think just over the years, we just need to shore that process up and that structure within the school. But you're 100% right and you've been on the board for a while, that our philosophy has been for that very reason that we don't come up with, like most districts don't anymore. AP themselves as an organization stopped doing book lists for that same reason to say, you can't broad stroke a community and say that's, this is broad for everybody and, and good for everybody. So that was the same reason that we adopted that, as many districts around the country have to say, each school really needs to look at their students. And that could change year to year. Depends on the makeup of class. I did in my class, in my English classroom, it changed year to year, depending on maturity levels, depending on who the kids were, interests. So you're, you're 100% right. We're just going to put a little more structure in process to make sure it's written and clear how that should work.
So, so I guess just as long as I can get, if I can get a little more clarity on the committee participation so that, because if they didn't participate, they could give you back their written.
Emails.
Recommendation of, here's what I recommend.
Yes.
So I think I'd like to just know that how we have that covered in this group. That would be helpful to me between now and next, next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Wells, Mrs. Laventis Wells.
I know this is a delicate topic. I do have some concerns that the teacher would know her community and just pick what she wants with that specific theory. Not sure that's a teacher's going to know every person's personality, home, environment. We're talking high school, correct?
Yes, in this case.
Ms. Laventis Wells, can you turn your microphone on, please?
It's on.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
That'll be great.
Okay. So let me go back to this list, because I just, we're talking about the high school list. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the middle school parents and all that, that's out of, that's not involved in this.
Not in this case.
Okay. So there were three parents, is that correct?
There was one parent.
Okay.
Oh, you mean on the committee?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. We have three parents on the committee.
Right. And they could have children, were those children, were their children in high school or their children just could go to school in the district?
They are high school parents.
Okay.
For the high school committee.
Okay. And then you have three district high school teachers with, from different disciplines. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And these high school teachers all are aware of this list of books, correct?
They, the three teachers are from across Greenville County schools. The committee was developed prior to any submission of a request for reconsideration. So we build the committee, the committee after we promote and request applicants, we build the committee and the committee stands.
Yes.
Our last request for reconsideration, I think was in 2007, 2008. So for that period of time, we've not had one of these to come forward. So the committee, which we developed, we, in 2019 is when we promoted, requested and got members for this new committee. We'll do this again.
This committee was picked in 2019. That's what you're telling me. This is a committee from 2019.
We solicited the committee, yes.
And these people are still in their same positions?
Yes.
Okay.
The committee, the deadline for submitting letters was November 1st of 2019. And that committee is responsible, once they're selected, for handling complaints from the public.
Okay.
Considering the appropriateness of instructional materials.
Okay. So you have three parents, you have three district people, you have a high school social media person.
Media specialist, yes.
Social media specialist. And you have two high school students.
Yes, the high school committee does have students.
Okay. And, and these students were in place two years ago?
These students were in high school, yes.
Where are they now?
They are still in high school.
Okay. All right. So this class that reads these, have, have the options to read these books Okay, all right, so this class that reads these, have the options to read these books, is it AP honors or is it just a regular English class?
This list was for advanced placement AP.
Okay, so it's AP, all right. And how many students are usually in an AP class?
That varies, depending on the AP class.
I mean, but they're not large classes.
They are not excessively large in most cases, but they can be.
Depends on the, depends on the school, I mean, if there's, you know, 22, 28 kids that sign up for AP, it would be one AP class.
Okay, so at this school, this particular school, wherever the school is, this particular, how many are in that class? I'm sure you might know that. Do you know that?
I do not have that number for the class.
Okay, well, will you just get me that information?
I will.
Thank you so much. So I think when you were answering Mr. Sudditt's question, something popped up, and you said, when y'all had these three, four meetings, three meetings or-
We had three meetings.
Three meetings, okay, three meetings, and at these meetings, you didn't have the same people at the meetings?
We did not have the exact same people at every meeting. Again, we had them over the summer, he submitted the request in May, we let them know in June that our first meeting would be in July, the following August and September, while we were able to give them the books to read.
Right.
So we had representation.
Define representation, that, I mean, you're talking to somebody that has a law enforcement background, so we're not preparing a case for court, I'm trying to think, how am I gonna get my witnesses and what, so how many of those seven, wait, six, eight, nine people did you have at each meeting?
I need to pull and get that for you, but it is important to note, because I asked Mr. Webb to let me know, this committee does not require a quorum. And while we have the members of the committee who are invited to attend, who've committed to attending, I cannot require them to attend.
Okay.
But with the members who were present at each meeting, we held them to discussion of the books based on the complaint and based on policy KNBA.
So I would like to know how many were at each meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And the representation from each one of those groups, the parents, the teachers, the social media specialists, et cetera?
Thank you.
And then I would also, and I know you have no control over this, but there was also another statement that I picked up on, and it was, yes, they had the books, and yes, they had an opportunity to read them. Okay, so that tells me not all of them read the books, or I'm assuming, and we know what that word means, but I'm thinking that some of these people did not read these books entirely, which this would be a pain to read, but I'm sure there are Cliff Notes to it, maybe not, I'm just joking, but that, the materials are easy to read, it's just there, there's a lot of depth to them, and there's, there are a lot of words in some of these books that are interesting, I'll put it that way, are interesting. And so the reason I ask how many students are in the class is because how many books are on the list that they receive?
Twenty-five.
There are 25 books on the list. Okay, I like a list, so I can just see the list. Okay, and then they present to the class and they get in a debate on it, is that what they're doing, or how is this information used?
Based on the teacher's response, she partnered students who read the same book.
She partners two people to read the same book, okay?
It might not necessarily be two, it might be-
It may be a group.
I believe the example I heard was four when you shared this information with us, so it could be more than pairing with another student. I would assume that would depend on, you might have a group of one, I would imagine if only one, if a student, only one student chose a title.
Yes.
And you could have five that chose a title, and they might be working together. Was that, was that a fair assumption?
That is, prior to giving the assignment, the teacher sent an assignment of a Google sheet, and the students were to select the books that they either wanted to read, could read. She took the list of what the students selected to read, and she used that to form her groups, who would then participate in the assignment, but she wanted them to commit upfront to which books they would read, so she could carefully place them together.
Okay, so is she placing them where she feels like one's gonna be for this and one's gonna be against it, or how's she doing that?
I'm not able to answer the question about how she did it.
If she's saying she knows her students and that's why she gives them these books, I'm trying to figure out what the object of this in the end is to accomplish. Do you have a for and against? And then, then you get discussion about it, and you come up with different points of view. Or are you gonna have everybody going with this and nobody going against it? Then, you know, that makes a difference to me. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, Dr. I know this is a difficult, and I'm talking in circles because you can't talk about any of this, but I'm just trying to get a feel for it, so I can get a better understanding. I'm not against having a book list, I just want to make sure, if you, you know, if you have a book list, and this is the same book list they use for years and years, well, times have changed, everything's looking differently, people have a different perspective on, you know, different situations, and so, you know, I'm just not sure, I don't want to go any further, because I want to get that information from you before I really, you know, get into the depth of it, but I appreciate this information, I appreciate you going through everything, and I look forward to receiving the email with all the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaVentis Wells. Our next speaker is Sarah Doolan, and I believe she's participating by Zoom. She had, she was here for the meeting but left, and I think I understand that we're able to do that, is that correct, Chris? Are we, oh, yeah. Ms. Doolan, you're up, and I'm not sure if we can hear you or not, but if you could give it a shot.
Hey, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate y'all talking about this, I feel like I have a little bit better understanding of the classroom dynamic, because it sounds like this is a, that these books weren't assigned to every student to then have a class discussion, but were more of a choice. But then, when you say that there were books to balance out the views of these, I haven't heard what the, what the opposing books are. So if there are partners of books where there's one view versus another, can we get a list of what books are, would be the opposing books to these? Because I feel like if I'm gonna take the time and read these four books real quick in the next two weeks, it would also be nice to know what the opposing books are that are assigned or offered.
It's gone off. Thank you for that question. So within the, within the policy that was referenced, we are supposed to make books with opposing views available. The committee was not charged with analyzing the list for balance, only the individual books. And the assignments that were given, if I took, for example, the Media's book, Dark Money, and this just happens to be large print, but if I took this book on as a student, the teacher may charge me, the student or the group of students, with analyzing Jane Meyer's perspective, identifying where she may have bias, looking at her sources, looking at the evidence she presented. Our team may be charged with finding counterarguments or arguments to purport a different viewpoint. That is where the individual takes a piece of rhetoric, and that's what the book looked, argumentative rhetoric, and we analyze it based on the evidence presented. In each book, an author presented a viewpoint and presented evidence around that viewpoint. So the assignment in that individual class or the purpose of the AP overview, the purpose of that is to be able to analyze what is here. There is value and merit in taking it a step further and having an opposing viewpoint and having students debate two different sides of one story. There is value and merit in that. However, this committee only considered individual books under KNBA, they could only consider the merit and instructional value of individual books.
Okay, so there are books presented with opposing viewpoints?
There are books out there with opposing viewpoints, those are not all on the list.
It might help that, I'm sorry, it might help that better understand that. The discussion that we had earlier, Mr. McCoy weighed in on, and I weighed in on as well, had to do with the balance of available titles on the suggested list. That is outside of this appeal, we simply mentioned how we are addressing that because we believe that is an issue. That's not inside the boundaries of this appeal, though, the appeal is limited to the objection of the person who presented it and the action that the committee took or chose not to take, as the case might be. The other is an issue for us to resolve outside of this process, and we already have a draft framework in place to do so. That's really not directly related to, to the books in question, it is something that we noted, it was brought to light in this process, and it's more, it is the appropriate venue to address that through administrative rule subsequent to the established policy regarding the selection of materials. And what we do have, as we mentioned earlier, we have the ultimate selection process in that we, through your policy, allow a student or parent to provide their own source that they wish to utilize as opposed to those on the list, but that, maybe that helps to clarify it to a degree.
Okay, because in the policy, it says that opposing sided controversial issues will be provided, and if that isn't necessarily always the case, maybe just for total transparency, maybe it would be a good idea for the district to ask, particularly the AP teachers that may be using more controversial books, to publish their list annually with a brief description or, you know, include the educational value of a book chosen, as well as the opposing view book chosen, to show that in fact, we are providing opposing views. Does that make sense?
It does, I believe, in fact, their reading list as of this month are on the website by, by teacher, so it would be by your child's teacher. Now, providing an overall synopsis of all the books that are on reading list would be a rather large task to ask teachers to undertake, but certainly, the lists are readily available, is that correct, Mr. Reimer? Not always been, but they are now.
Okay, that was my only question, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Doolan, Ms. Styles.
Thank you, Derek. Several of my questions have been answered, so one of the comments that I wanted to make and ask is if teachers were required to make their list available, and I understand that has not been the situation, but it currently is, and I think that's really important, that we need to be open and transparent with our parents, and when parents can go to a teacher's website and they can look and they can see what the books are, and they have an opportunity, an optimal time to look at those books, read those books, and help their child make thoughtful decisions that they feel comfortable about, I believe that will help to eliminate any problems that may exist. And also, I had a question, I know that as an educator myself, I know that a lot of times, teachers, they're not into the policy, sorry, Doug, but they're into the day-in-day rigors of teaching the content, and that's a tremendous job, so sometimes, even for principals on occasion, just having a grasp of the policy can be a very difficult task. And that's why I feel sometimes that procedures are important at the school level, that support teachers in understanding what their parameters are. So another question would be, do we have a procedure that these AP English teachers use, so that when they go about selecting this list, that maybe we implement some parts of our policy into that procedure to make sure that all the key points are covered, so that this board and this committee, which y'all have worked so hard, thank you, Charlotte, will not continual, to continue to be in the same position to debate and discuss this and have books continue to come up? Is there a procedure, is that gonna be a part of what you're working on, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am, that will be, and Dr. Styles, you make a good point about the policies, there's a lot of policies that govern from the board and rules to teachers, so this year, one of the things we did for principals is we actually took every policy out of the board manual that pertained to teachers and administrators and put that in one big document for teachers to, I mean, for principals to review with teachers, because as you said, there's a lot in there and they get lost in that. But I agree with you on the, particularly weaving in the board policy and criteria into, particularly for the AP teachers, because they have a criteria, when they go through that training, part of that training involves, you know, selections and book selections and all that as well, but I think embedding it, to your point, our policy in with that as well, is a good idea for future as well.
The other thing that's impacted AP is, and I don't remember what year it discontinued, what year?
I think it was 18.
In 18, up until 18, the college board provided, you didn't have to use all of them, but you would be wise to have used them, because you're preparing students for AP exam, they provided a reading list for every AP course, and they ceased to do so in 2018.
Thank you, Dr. Royster, and one final comment, Charlotte, that I've just, I've heard permeate through the discussion today, and I think something that I know that I would feel good about, and I feel like perhaps my colleagues would, is if there was also some parameters in regarding the committee about the required number of minimum participants that had to participate during a book review, I think that would make me feel comfortable as a board member, and perhaps that would also make the parent who has the concern in regard to the book feel more comfortable. I think we should have accountability and transparency there, and I think that we should have a minimum expectation of the number of participants, and exactly, not just the number, but from where they, what category they fall from, whether they're parent, community member, teacher. I would like for us to think about a procedure for that and that we don't proceed on these committees, or do we delay until we conform that, and maybe having some members that are on the backup, maybe when some people can't participate, we have, we have other members that we can go to until we fulfill that expectation. I know that would make me feel very comfortable.
And Dr. Styles, I want to comment on that, because that was a good point, and I don't know if the board remembers, but a couple, I think the last time y'all approved the list, or maybe the time before that, we actually did move to, for example, if 12 parents apply, we really accept 12 parents on the list, because I think it was Ms. Mosley said it before, you can go two years sometimes without getting a request, and so at that point, if you had a senior, they're already rolled off of seniors, so we have that, to your point, kind of a backup list. We don't always, we're not always successful in getting a lot of backups on that list, but we do, for the most part, the people that apply, we put them on that list, so that if they say, well, I don't live here anymore, I can't participate, we can go to that next person without doing the whole process again.
Because I wasn't real clear on this, I thought I was when you shared this information with us before, Dr. McDavid, but every person who served on these committees and then voted, cast a vote, supplied commentary, whether in person or in writing, each of those indicated they did in fact read the book?
Yes, they indicated they did in fact read the book.
And was it the same committee for each book, or was there some variance between groups for books?
There was variance between groups of those who participated live and sent information between groups, between July and September, there was- There was some variance.
Let let me ask that a different way. You have four books. Did the committee vary that weighed in on book number one?
They varied in attendance and participation in the live Zooms, but it's the same committee.
It's the same, so the same committee?
Yes.
They might have attended, they might have participated by Zoom, they might have sent their comments to you.
Yes.
That was one committee for book number one. Book number two?
Same committee.
Same committee as book number one?
Yes.
They were consistent through to the end?
I would need to track the attendance of individual members from meeting one to member.
Well, let me ask it a different way. Did everybody that started out in each of the four ultimately comment in person or in writing about the book?
Not every person commented in writing about each book.
Or in person?
In person.
Either in person or in writing.
Not every person who commented in the first meeting commented in every single book.
Okay. Did they weigh in their opinion of the book at the end? Because they're not compelled to comment on it, correct?
They're not compelled to comment on it, but they did, if they did not send that information in and did not participate, we took each book independently. We did not have a study of all four, and then at the end, you vote.
Right. Now, I'm not sure that was clear. Maybe I didn't ask that the best way. Each book was viewed individually?
Yes.
And the reason that it went over four, was it four meetings?
Three meetings.
Three meetings because two books were addressed in the same meeting?
Yes.
And then one meeting each for the other two?
Yes.
Because of the amount of time it took to read the book?
Yes.
And they had to read four?
Yes.
I seem to recall you having said at some point, only one person didn't read all four. Is that right?
That was the person issuing the request for reconsideration.
So no, everyone that participated on the committee indicated they had read each of the four books?
That was the expectation.
And each of the four, the one, each of the persons on the committee weighed in with their opinion, either their opinion being some comment about the book, or it ought to go or it ought to stay?
Yes.
Every person? One or the other? Because there's no requirement, let me make sure I'm saying this right. There's no requirement for you to offer up a comment about it. The requirement of being on the committee is to read the book and to render a decision. You might choose to offer a comment or you might not. Is that correct?
You may choose to offer a comment and at the end of the review, if you were not present when we did Dark Money, if you were not present in that session and you did not send a review in in writing, we did not call them at home to say, did you read the book? Can you give me your decision?
So you you had to have either been present or commented in writing, then your your vote, so to speak, was solicited?
Yes.
If you didn't do either of those two things, you did not get to speak to the book.
Correct.
You didn't get to vote.
Correct.
So I think what we would want to make sure that the board members had is how many per title fulfill those responsibilities and ultimately said stay or go?
Okay.
I think there are three choices, but basically, it's stay or go or be done under the supervision of the teacher. I think those are the three choices. And those are the three choices by policy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. Thank you, Dr. Stiles. Do you have any other questions? All right, we have run out of time and we have three more speakers. So without objection, we will extend for additional fifteen minutes. Mr. Meek.
Thank you. Dr. Dr. McDavid, if I understand correctly, each each student was required to read one book?
Each student was required to read all four books?
No, 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 I'm talking about students in the class.
In the class?
Yeah.
Yes, the students were required to read one book. Yes, sir.
So even if they would have had another opposing book, they were not required to read that? They only had to read read the one book?
That is correct.
Then the two or three members or four members, five members in the committee that read that book would then sit down and discuss that book, discuss the points in the book, maybe from their own information, whether they looked at Google or Cliff Notes or whatever. Is is that correct?
They would complete the assignment, the assignment given by the teacher, which would involve analysis of the evidence presented.
Everyone in the class was was asked to read one book?
One book.
So it did not matter that we had twenty-five books or if we had an opposing viewpoint book, they were only required to read one book?
That is correct.
So they were to make their report on what they thought about that book?
That is correct.
Okay. And if also, I guess, reiterate the point that we are here to to really make a decision on what the review committee reported out. And their report was they were to leave the book in, no matter if it was for school or for the district, on all four books?
Yes, sir.
They all voted, and it was unanimous, their decision that came to us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Ms. Mosley.
Okay, I just have a follow-up question. I understand what Mr. Meek is saying, and I think I understood what Dr. Royster was saying as far as what our purpose is. But I have, what concerns me, and I guess what I'm making sure I understand, it, you're asking me to make a decision in a, and not necessarily today, but at some point in a vacuum a little bit. And I really, for my comfort level, and Mr. McCoy, this might be a question for you, just to clarify. I want to be sure that we are in the business of teaching students how to think and not what to think.
Agreed.
And I just want to be clear because in assessing this request, I feel like it's important for me to kind of understand a little bit broad, more broadly, or I should say, find comfort in what is planned a little bit more broadly. With lists being reevaluated, teachers being trained, and as part of that training, are we? Are we emphasizing what I just said about how to think versus what to think? Because I I think we would be naive as a school district to not recognize that we have teachers in classrooms where political, let's just say, political bias creeps in. And that's where we get into a little bit of trouble, in my opinion. So I just want to be really clear that, I mean, when I'm asked to make a decision on this or anything else that's in this ballpark, that.
Yeah, so I do, and I agree with you, Ms. Mosley. I I think that one of the things we did this year, I think, and we sent it to y'all, I think I did it last spring, but we can send it again. We have a training that Ms. Reed does with, we really do with all teachers, because all teachers could come across controversial content, obviously, in the classroom. And one of those those outlines in that responsive teaching piece is that you have to remain biased, to your point, on what you're teaching. But that is the whole point, is that a teacher remains biased when they're presenting controversial material? I'm sorry, unbiased, I say biased, sorry.
I was trying to call you.
Got it, super late. Had a late flight last night, I'm obviously still tired. Yes, so that they have an unbiased opinion in there, and they're remaining neutral in that. And so their job is really in that regard, and what Ms. Reed does is is really when she's training our English teachers and we're training other teachers, is really help them know how to facilitate that conversation safely with students, keep it, keep it amicable and and nice, but also be able to remain neutral in those positions so the kids can critically think, present opposing viewpoints ultimately, and then, you know, make their own decision, but do that in a safe space. So certainly, to your point, though, when we come across one that's not that way, then that would be a conversation we would have with the principal or the teacher if if we're getting parent complaints saying, I feel like there's a leaning here, or maybe there is a bias, maybe possible opinion in there that we're going to address.
Okay, Mr. Derek, I think I'm clear. I just wanted to make sure I'm comfortable because I don't want to make decisions in a vacuum. I do want to kind of understand the bigger picture of where this might all ultimately land. So, got it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Mr. Suddeth.
Mr. Suddeth, the committee did consider each book in light of each aspect, yes?
I'm I'm trying to, what did the committee put in writing? Did it put in writing, well, this is the purpose of the book, this is the educational value of the book?
During the meeting, we asked them to consider each. I took the minutes of the meeting, and so I have my notes from the minutes of the meeting, and those who submitted in writing submitted, and they were asked to consider those areas. So in the response that I shared verbally, I included their comments or summarized their comments around each of those aspects.
But when we rendered the decision on the appropriateness, did we tell them the purpose or the value of the book? Did they, did the committee do that in writing?
The committee did that in discussion, and I took notes in writing.
But no, they did not put it in writing?
The committee is able to provide one decision about the the request for reconsideration, and they're to consider all of those components. They do not, they did not render a decision about the age appropriateness as separately from the purpose, separately from all the other aspects. They were asked to consider all of those aspects in giving one decision.
They said they agreed the books are appropriate in light of age of the student reading the book, the educational value contained in the four books. So they gave, they they went so far as to make this one statement. So that's all that they did. There's nothing else as far, we're looking here about to render decision on appropriateness of the challenged materials. That's in the policy. The number two was we had to review the materials or value, the relevant community standard, whatever, et cetera, and then to render that decision. So the decision that they rendered was a verbal decision or is it a written decision? Or did they render a verbal decision and then you take notes and make that verbal decision into a written decision?
Actually, your policy requires that Dr. McDavid, as the person facilitating the work of the committee, capture their commentary, whether it was in writing or in verbal, and convey that in writing to the person who submitted the request for removal. And I don't think this is included in here, but we have a copy of that and we'll put that in the information along with the summary that Dr. McDavid provided you at the outset. But actually, your policy requires the superintendent's designee to do that on behalf of the committee.
We do have this in writing?
She has the decision of the committee summarized in writing that was communicated to Mr. Brundage, and that is what he based his appeal to you on.
So that would tell me what the educational value of each book?
No, sir, it will not necessarily tell you the educational value of the book. It will tell you that.
One sentence right here, Dr. Royster. The books are appropriate in light of the age of the students reading the books and educational value contained in the four books. That's it.
Yes, sir. And that committee would have rendered a judgment on that. They would not necessarily have said, we believe for these reasons. They would have offered an independent judgment and cast their vote, so to speak, based on that judgment, much as you do as a part of this deliberative body. You don't necessarily offer up all the details of of why you render that decision. You simply may render a decision, you may include some detail or you may not. It's not incumbent upon the members of that committee to include detail in their reasoning. It's incumbent on them to consider those things, and they are guided to make sure that they do consider them.
It's usual that written takes precedent over verbal. And so, if what was said, one thing, but what's put down in writing?
Yes, sir. What's put in writing summarizes what was said. It doesn't provide all the detail.
And a teacher list, can that include a book that is outside the library?
Yes, sir. The the teachers may have books within their classroom. They have books that are maybe available through the school library. They may refer them to an external library, but generally, what they would use would be available in the school library because part of the method by which titles are selected in school libraries has to do with the books that teachers within that school need to have included in their classroom. We also have at certain levels, certain sets of books available through the warehouse that teachers can order and have delivered so they have a classroom set of those. They tend to be more, probably more middle school and lower high school level text.
So we'd never ask students to buy a book?
I would, I would hesitate to ever use the phrase never. We would, that would not be our practice. Would, might there, might there be one of our six thousand teachers doing that? There might be, but that wouldn't be our practice, and we would steer them in a different direction should we find out that was the case.
Okay, so my final question. Every book in a library is approved by whom?
On its, without exception, there wouldn't be a book in the library that weren't, was not approved by the media specialist, but often, there are numerous others involved in that. And there are lists, Jeff helped me with some of the organizations that provide those lists.
So Fallot would be?
Books by topic.
Yeah.
For grade levels.
So Fallot would be your largest, that's probably the one we order from most in media special centers because they actually do put collections together. Scholastic, of course, which you all are aware of, would also be one that would be highly ordered from. And and those are typically from, those companies are organized not only by topic, as Dr. Royster mentioned, but also by grade level appropriateness and those types of things. And we always still encourage the media specialist or us committee to read the books. Obviously, can, they're not going to read all hundred thousand books that are in the media center, but they, those those companies that Dr. Royster referenced are good about making sure that the collections are appropriate.
And next, McCoy, if I go to the library and I pick up a book and I ask who approved this book, then you can tell me who approved that book?
Well, Mr. Suddeth, I don't know that, like I said, I don't know that media specialists can read all hundred thousand books that are in the media.
I'm not, I'm asking who? Is there someone, every book in a library, someone has approved?
No, sir.
Or is that, is that so? No.
No, sir.
There are books in a library that no one knows anything about?
No, sir.
They would know.
What are we saying, Dr. Royster?
The media specialist would ultimately have had to approve ordering those books. There is no human way possible our media specialist could read every book in their library. They depend on lists from publishers that are broken down by subject, by grade level. They depend on recommendations from teachers within the building. They may depend on recommendation for our, from our own subject area specialist. But ultimately, somebody had to order that book and pay for it, and that person is the media specialist in that school. If it's a book ordered for a department, it would be the department head within that school. But the books in the media center, there's no one taking a book and putting it in there without the knowledge of the media specialist who's responsible for ordering them, ensuring that payment is made and that they are appropriately cataloged into our system.
So that's what the media specialist orders and catalogs?
Yes, sir.
But I can't say that our media specialist approved it. I can say the media specialist ordered it and the media specialist cataloged it. That's all I can say.
You wish to express it that way? Yes, sir, you can say it that way.
So the so the book might contain something, how to do something to someone else that is causing great harm. And so that cannot be determined as to who made that book available. I'm just trying to understand, what we're really saying is, in a roundabout way, that every book in a library is not approved.
Mr. Suddeth, we're out of time.
Every book in the library is ordered and every book is cataloged.
No, sir. What I said was, every book in the library is not read by the media specialist. They, in fact, did approve it or it wouldn't be ordered.
All right, Mr. Suddeth, Dr. Royster, we're out of time and we're off topic. So without objection, we'll extend for additional 10 minutes, but if you could kind of bring our questions back to these four books.
I'm fine, I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Suddeth. Mr. Meek.
Just a couple of questions, just to clarify, because I'll probably not get to speak at the board meeting. So the student himself, did he read the book or not? I know the teacher assigned him the book because he did not choose the book and the father said, I believe that they were discussing it, but the committee, their little group disbanded because of lack of interest or whatever. But did the student read the book?
The student did not read the book that was assigned to him. As he did not select one.
Okay. The teacher assigned him the book because he would not choose a book, right?
That's correct.
The student was allowed to choose another book or the parent was allowed to choose another book and neither did. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
There are no other questions. I have a few for Mr. Webb. So the first question I have is about board policy IFA. So as I read board policy IFA, the last paragraph says, parents are gardens which to challenging the district's use of instructional materials should first attempt to resolve their concern with their child's teacher and principal. So when I read that, I interpret that to mean that we assume that the only adult that could challenge a book would be an adult who is a parent of a child who's in the classroom where that book is being used. Is that, can an adult who isn't a parent challenge a book?
And the policy specific to complaints about instructional materials, it does state, any individual residing with the attendance area of a school district, of the school district or who has a child who attends the school in the school district may lodge a complaint.
Okay, so this child was in this class last year, isn't in the class anymore, but the parent can still appeal a book that his child will not ever be asked to read again because he wants to prevent some other child from being asked to read that book?
As a policy is right now. And of course, any concern, we always encourage it to be addressed at the school level to try to be resolved there before it escalates to the district level.
Of course. So the second question I have is about question number eight on the, on the request. So question number eight says, what would you like your school to do about this material? And there are three choices that are given. Number one is do not assign it to my child. Number two is withdraw it from all students in the grade level as well as my child. And number three is send it to the district's review committee for reevaluation. Correct? So in all four of these cases, the person who appealed this checked three, which is send it to the review committee for reevaluation. Didn't the district comply with this parent's request and send it to the review committee for evaluation? If he wanted the book withdrawn from the district, he would have checked box two, which is withdraw it from all students in this grade level and from my child.
Yes, I believe that the district procedurally handled it correctly by sending it to the materials review committee for reevaluation.
So we honor the parent's request, so why is it being appealed to us?
Because as I understand, looking through the appeal itself, he has disagreed with the decision of the committee that reevaluated.
But he didn't ask the committee to withdraw the book. He asked the committee to reevaluate the book. If he wanted him to withdraw it, he would have checked box two. Correct?
Yes, I believe that box three could also include, if the committee made a decision during their reevaluation, they could have withdrawn it from all students at the grade level or specific grade levels.
All right, so then my last question is about question number four, which is, for what age group would you recommend this material? And in At Least Dark Money, his answer is, I don't have any issue with our kids reading this book. As I stated in number three, the issue is the lack of opposing viewpoints. So even in number four, he doesn't have an issue with this book being in our schools or being on the list. He has an issue with it being a lack of opposing viewpoints, which this district has already said they already are going to provide. So this parent's appeal that's asking us to withdraw a book includes in it a statement from the parent saying he doesn't have an issue with the kids reading this book. Is that how you read that?
That is correct. As it, within the four corners of the book itself, it appears based upon that response that he does not have a specific issue related to only that book.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, that will conclude item 3.05 and will conclude the administration section of today's COW, 216. Mr. Meek.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We're just a little bit behind schedule, it looks like. We'll go quickly to the building and grounds, Mr. Suddeth.
Thank you, Derek.
001 Facilities Project Report. Mr. Carlin, I'll turn it over to him, Dr. Royster.
I don't believe Mr. Carlin has a particular report, but would answer any questions that you have. You didn't have a particular item to note, did you, Colonel?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any questions you all might have?
Ms. Goodwin-Carlwell.
On the South Side Wait Room, is it still on time because of what happened over there?
At this point, Ms. Goodwin-Carlwell, we anticipate that all of the current projects that are underway are on time. We will have a slight delay because of what happened at the school, but we don't anticipate it being a showstopper.
Okay, was that the Wait Room?
Yes, ma'am, it was, it was the Wait Room project, correct.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? That concludes my portion of the program. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Suddeth. You can show us how to get through these. Ms. LaVentis Wells.
We have moved, thank you, Mr. Meek. We, Chairman, we have moved 501 and 502 to next week.
Next month.
Next month. But we are going to go ahead and approve 5.03. And with that being said, Dr. Royster, would you like?
Now, we have two innovative course approvals that we present today for your consideration. Mr. McCoy is here and available if you have any question about the two. I believe one is Business Finance Honors, which is simply a designation of honors to an existing course, and the other is the Avid Seminar. Mr. McCoy, anything else in particular that ought to be highlighted?
Sir, I think you did it.
Say that again?
No, sir, I think he went over it appropriately.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ms. LaVentis Wells.
Yes, sir, Mr. Meek.
I make a motion to approve the proposed local board courses.
Yes, sir, and do I have a second? Ms. Wells, and any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. Whoa, well, take it back, I changed myself. I tried. Mr. Suddeth.
I have one question.
Mr. Suddeth.
The Business Finance Honors, can that course be available in other high schools?
Yes, sir, once a course is approved in here by you all, it's available to all 14 high schools.
Thank you.
That it, Mr. Suddeth?
That's it.
Ms. Wells.
Jeff, on the Avid Seminar?
Yes.
I noticed in the presentation we were going to get on the Avid program, it rolls it up to early college, but this is at South Side. And I know South Side has, they have, I guess they already have one, two, and three?
Correct.
Avid there? So is that all they, what do they have as far as the Avid program goes that this is going to connect to?
Well, this is really that fourth year for, this will be your senior class. This is really your fourth year and ultimately, I believe if I'm not mistaken, next year, Wade Hampton, I believe, is a year behind implementing. So the next year, they would use this course as well. So this is your senior seminar class for Avid.
Are these the only four classes that are Avid classes that are at South Side?
Yes, those are currently. Now, we may end up adding, there may be some additional classes added since everybody's on a block now, so we may end up coming back with a five, six, seven, eight because of the semester. Most of these run year long in most cases, but it could be possible in the future we'd come back with a five, six, seven, eight because of the block.
So we used the Avid program at the early college?
We have not used the Avid program.
So we've only used it at the middle school level?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Wade Hampton and South Side.
Okay, so is this, at the high school level, is Avid just these sequential section of classes that they offer at the high school level? Is it just one class a year to help with the?
Yes, so it's for identifying those students that really, and yeah, this is supposed to be on the heels of the Avid presentation. You've gotten a little bit more about their criteria. But yes, the Avid criteria identifies students that has the potential for college, that meets kind of a poverty level and has a desire to go to college, no parent education, and basically tries to put those kids in those classes to follow that cohort for four years to give them the skills for college-level courses.
Okay, so this, and similarly, this could be used at any of our high schools. They just have to, you can talk to us about that next month, about how they might adopt that curriculum.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, and then just for information, how many local board courses do we have now that are approved?
I'd have to pull that number for you. I'd have to try to run that.
Okay, because you usually, you did have a spreadsheet.
I do.
I noticed that wasn't included this year.
Yeah, no, I can pull the spreadsheet. I don't usually include the whole list for you, but I can pull you those current local boards.
Okay, and just if those are broken down by the honors, you know, just so we can get a sense of how many of those are we sort of taking advantage of the opportunity to give our kids the honors credit by extending classes? That'd be great.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mosley.
I was just letting you know, when you said there's no questions, I said they have questions, I'm good.
Well, good, then I'll go right to Ms. Goodwin-Carlwell.
Okay, Jeff, with the Avid program, it's only at two of our high schools.
Currently, it's only two.
What about the schools that have like some of the kids that are low level, the high line, high schools that have kids that might fall through the cracks? Have we thought about offering this program to those kids?
Yeah, so we are looking at the potential of expanding Avid. That was kind of a pilot at South Side. South Side chose to undertake that and then Wade Hampton. So yes, it's something we'll look at to see, is it scalable? Is it something we should offer at other schools? We're, to your point, we're moving to the middle school level of those three feeder patterns into that school as well. So yes, it's something we're going to look, we'll look at.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please address by saying aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Meek, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
That concludes the committee, the whole meeting today. Anybody have, anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Meek. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.